Council chambers, staff reports are available to your right against the wall. And please, if you're not part of our fine public safety, law enforcement and Cal Fire group, if you could either silence or even better turn off your cell phones so that they don't cause any interference. That's the word I'm looking for with our audio equipment. Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order and ask for roll call, please.
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Muller?
Here.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Next up, a pledge of allegiance, and I would like to first welcome our special guest this evening, Supervisor Diane Dillon. I'd like to invite her to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. That is our new district supervisor, Diane Dillon. Closed session report, do we have a closed session report?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next up, adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any corrections or changes, or is there a motion for adoption?
I move we adopt the agenda for this evening.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Next up, public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on something that we are not already going to discuss as part of our agenda tonight? I don't see anyone coming forward, so we'll move straight on to our consent calendar. Are there any conflicts, questions, or is there action on the consent calendar?
Before we vote at the suggestion of the town clerk, I do want to point out that I was absent for the original reading of item D, but have reviewed the ordinance in full and will be voting tonight.
Okay, that is the wayfinding sign program?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Dornbecker?
I would also like to say that I was absent for the reading of that, but I did watch it online and I will be ready to vote for it as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Muller?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull item C for a separate vote.
All right. Anything else?
I'll just make two comments, if I may. I won't be pulling any items, but the first one is on item G, just to commend the Department of Public Works and the fact that they got this project done under budget. I think that's important, that we acknowledge when we do things under budget, because we so often find ourselves being over budget on certain projects. So, job well done and thank you for that. And then secondly, and I already brought this to the, at least my question to the town manager with regards to the replacement banquet chairs, that I would hope, and I am sure we will, try to find a suitable buyer or a suitable place to put our old banquet chairs, so that we dispose of the assets properly, but also potentially recap or recapture some income from that. That's all I have.
That's correct. Any other comments or conflicts? With that, item 7C has been requested that we pull that, so is there a motion to approve items A through H except for C?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes, thank you. Item 7C, Hotel Yountville, Hopper Creek Apartments. Councilmember Muller, you requested to pull this item?
Yes, there was not a unanimous vote on that, so I thought we could take, pull this and do a separate vote on this one as well.
To recognize the previous vote that was?
Correct.
Three-two, I believe, if, do I remember correctly, it was councilmembers Muller and Hall that were opposed?
Correct.
Right? So you just wanted to read that into the record? Or do you want to actually have a separate vote to recognize that?
I think we would need a separate motion and a separate vote since that has been pulled.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt 7C?
So moved.
I'll second that.
A roll call vote on that item, please.
Councilmember Hall?
No.
Councilmember Muller?
No.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Yes.
Mayor Dunbar?
Yes. Thank you very much. That does pass for the three-two vote again. And that takes care of our consent calendar. Moving on to item eight, presentations. First, we do have on the agenda an Allied Council update, but I do not see anyone from the Allied Council with us. So, I do just want to acknowledge related to the Allied Council, which I believe is meeting tomorrow. There was an event that Vice Mayor and Councilmember Muller and I just attended up at the Veterans Home. And actually, maybe I can invite Supervisor Dillon to come up. She did actually organize and co-host this Purple Heart ceremony, so if you could, maybe just stand in for the Allied Council on this item.
Wow. Well, thank you very much, and I really appreciate that representatives from the Council were able to attend. Napa County declared itself a Purple Heart county. California is the first Purple Heart state, and when I heard about California being the first Purple Heart state and that this was an action that could be taken, I had just recently had a tour of the Veterans Home with the Administrator, Marcella McCormick, who I know you all know, and had come away thinking, need to do more for these folks and want to do more. And when I, the Purple Heart recognition, it just, you know, let's recognize those veterans. And Mike Thompson is a Purple Heart recipient, or Congressman, and so he was there. And we had a great turnout, as you saw. So it was a privilege to be able to have that event well-attended. And I think we had folks from the Legion, American Legion Group in Calistoke, and American Legion in St. Helena, and from Napa come up, so it was really good. Felt good, felt meaningful.
Right.
So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for coming here and representing the Veterans Home for us.
Yes, and the mayor said, why don't you come over and visit us at our town council meeting? So here I am. And thank you very much. I look forward to representing all of you.
Thanks again. And next up, Cal Fire Public Safety Quarterly Report. The last public speaking event that we're going to hear from former Battalion Chief Parks, is that true?
Never say never.
I know you love these so much.
Yeah, I know.
The lengths you've gone to get out of this responsibility. You went and got yourself promoted out of the area. Fine.
Too kind. Good afternoon to the mayor and the other town staff, council. This is the second quarter report for 2012. That station this quarter responded to 253 medical aids, 14 public assists, 31 vehicle accidents, 49 alarm soundings, 11 structure fires, three vegetation fires, five miscellaneous, three rescues, three hazmats, and 14 tree to power lines. Of those calls, the breakdown was 88 for the town, 144 for the Veterans Home, 146 for the county, and eight for the city of Napa. Again, the call types fairly consistent. Again, you see the percentage skewing again slightly higher toward the Veterans Home, which is again, just a casualty of budget issues up there. So they are almost equal with the county, with the town being the distant third at this point. And that's been a pretty significant change from years past. It's still continuing to skew a little more each time. Only real significant events this year, pretty quiet quarter really. For public awareness, the chipping program began, it's in full swing now, but it began back in early April. Residents can call anytime for that service at 967-1426, or check napa firewise.org, and they can have their yardways chipped for free, or their fire hazard material chipped for free. And the truck did, or I'm sorry, both units responded to that large strip mall fire in the city of Napa as part of the mutual aid program. And they were, in fact, it actually, it was ironic that the city of Napa's truck was actually down for service during that time. So Truck 12 was actually a key piece of equipment in that particular fire. And it's one of those times that I think residents in this county tend to, you tend to look at the big aerial apparatus and say, why the heck do we need that? We don't have a lot of tall buildings. Well, it's that once in every 10 years or so that they prove their worth. In this case, that the unit itself and the mutual aid agreement between the city of Napa was beneficial for everyone. After that, just a series of public PR events, nothing unusual for us. I guess the biggest item of note is, like the mayor alluded to, is the county has since the last quarter appointed a dedicated county fire chief, Scott Upton, who's here in the audience with Supervisor Dillon tonight. We had some time to sit down with the town manager Rogers and kind of transition. Scott's, one of Scott's first orders of business was to kick me out of my post and shit me north, so I will be working in a different position up in St. Helena. But Scott, will be your fire chief for the county and for the town, and I think it's a positive step in a lot of different aspects for everybody. We've had a lot of time to talk, and again, we spent a couple hours with Stephen the other day, and you know, I think we're on the same page as far as continuing the high level of service I think we've provided. I think, you know, for yourselves, and I think for the town, you know, to put it on public record, it's been in a, and again, never say never, but it's been an incredibly positive experience for us, working, for me working here. Minus this particular portion of my job, but the, it doesn't seem like it's been that long, but I realized the other day that we've gone through, Stephen just got here, I think, about the same time I did, so a new town manager and almost a complete turnover of the town's staff in that time. Two mayors and most of the town council members. So it has been fairly significant, and we've gone through a few different people. Only real regret is I didn't get to spend more time with each of you and kind of get your feelings for how things are going, but for the most part, I tell you, you owe, it's been a great experience working with Stephen. He's a heck of a manager for you, a very good ally for us, but yet keeps the town's best interests in mind. And it's, he's been a very upfront, straight shooter, but very good to work with, as well as the rest of the staff, from Michelle to Sam and Graham and everybody else. It's been incredibly positive. You know probably as well as anybody that the town, excuse me, that the county is very diverse, so the fire department has a lot of different hats and opinions depending on where we are in the county, but this has been a real gem for us. It's been a real positive experience as far as the contract and our being here. So I'm sure Scott will continue to carry on the tradition of keeping the station as a part of the town and the high level of service that again, that we both come to expect from each other, so. Any questions on the quarterly report?
Any questions? I think it's a little bit ironic that we do have one of the most recent structure fires that took place here in town. We do have a representative from that organization with us this evening that probably appreciated the very rapid response that Station 12 and everyone else that responded, participated in, so thanks. We do need your service, we like it to be rare.
Understood.
But we know that it's always there. And also, the outreach you have done, you personally and your entire crew with the elementary school, with the community as a whole, you're always available, you're always volunteering. So if you could take that back, and Chief Upton also, it's been a great pleasure to work both with Mike and the entire staff, so we want to continue that great, great relationship.
The crew is very much part of town. I mean, they feel very much a part of the town, even though there's kind of a weird three-way contract. They are Yountville's fire station, you know, I mean, that's the way they feel, and they're very proud of that, in fact, so.
Thank you.
We're happy.
Vice Mayor, did you have a comment?
Mike, I do want to, again, thank you for all your service over the years, and whether you believe it or not, if we went back to the tape from the first time you came here versus you today, maybe one of the reasons they sent you here was for the experience, and you certainly are much more comfortable even if you don't feel like it inside.
Well, I didn't feel like it, but all right.
I do want to say I'm a little disappointed, the major event, you didn't include the fact that one of the fire trucks ran over my truck.
I was going to talk to you about that afterwards, but yeah. I understand it isn't your truck currently, is that correct?
It's mine.
It's still yours? Okay, well then, yeah, we owe you some ice cream.
I did file a claim with the county of Napa, which is kind of odd to file a claim against the county. But I'll talk to Supervisor Dillon about that.
Stephen will guide you through it, yeah.
But again, thank you and good luck, and I'm sure we'll see you around.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
If I could also invite Chief Upton to come up and just, for the audience at home that might be watching, or even around the world online, if we could just have you come up and, so we can all see your face and hear from you as well.
Big shoes to fill, Scott's the hardest-working guy I think we employ right now, so. I'm Scott Upton, just currently appointed July 16th to the Napa County Fire Chief position, which is a newly appointed position. Was currently working in Lake County as a Battalion Chief, a similar job to what Mike had. And, well, as far as public speaking, somewhat, a little bit more involved with doing that, but Mike and I share a lot of the same backgrounds. We both worked for local government, we both have air attack qualifications, love training, and firefighters at heart. The community, and he's, well, I mean, not to say city of Yountville, right, you can't have not made that mistake, but I think that our program here is second to none, to be honest with you. We've got an excellent system that's going to stay in place. Mike Wilson is going to be a Battalion Chief that's stationed across the street. I have an office in Napa in the county building and at headquarters, so he'll be there for day-to-day operations, and looking forward to it. Thank you all.
Great, thank you. And if I could invite Battalion Chief Wilson to come up also, just so folks can see who we're going to be seeing on a pretty regular basis also.
Hi, good to meet you guys. Mike Wilson, I've been working in and around Napa County Fire and Cal Fire for about the last 15 years. Last station I worked at in Yountville was down the street where the park is now. But no, I've, Yountville is near and dear to my heart, I spent a lot of time here as a firefighter and engineer, and looking forward to serving again for the town of Yountville.
Great, thank you and welcome. Chief welcome also. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you all.
Good luck with St. Helena.
Thanks, sir. We'll close those loops. We owe you a ride-along.
That's right.
And we're working with Stephen on your public safety education for the Gateway and Rancho.
Thank you.
We'll finish up before we go.
And ice cream.
And ice cream, yeah.
I had a new bumper.
Thanks very much. Next up, our Sheriff's Department Public Safety Quarterly Report from Sergeant Wilkinson.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm really glad I'm not the only one who's uncomfortable with public speaking.
Yeah, but you're armed. We all think you're fantastic.
I'm here to present the quarterly report for April, May, and June 2012, and I have to give credit where it's due. I have to give Cal a lot of credit, because only being here for part of the quarter, he had an awful lot of input. In fact, I offered to let him present this, and he suddenly became very ill. So here I am. As for the community activities that happened this quarter, there were seven events held in town. In April, there was a cycle for site and a prescription drug turn-in. In May, there was the Tour to Cure. June, there was the 5K Run, ALS Ride, the Father's Day Auto Show, and the Thomas Keller Event. Even with the large number of visitors that came, there was no significant law enforcement problems. There was no arrests or misdemeanor citations issued in any of those events. As for our staffing, I'm the only new one. All of our other staff members remain the same from last quarter. Our volunteer program is doing very well. Donna Geraci is still volunteering at the office three days a week. Recently got her trained to be able to release crime reports to help out the citizens, so if they need a copy of her report, they don't have to drive all the way to the main office to do it. But she's working out very well, and she's a great member to have there. In figuring the crime trends, I tried to compare most of the stats from January to June and compared them to January of June of last year, just to get an idea of the trends. Statistics indicate that the total calls for service in that time period increased by 36% over last year. Crimes against persons increased from seven last year to 17 this year. Most of those events, fortunately, were just simple assaults, most of those being alcohol-related. We didn't see a large increase in the major felonies, homicide, rape, those type of things. Property crimes increased from 20 to 35. The number of enforcement actions taken by officers followed that trend. The total number of investigative reports increased by 31%. The number of arrests increased by 163%, which is kind of deceiving just because the numbers are low. The actual numbers, it only increased from eight arrests last year to 21 this year. And the Veterans Home accounted for approximately 14.3% of all the calls that we handled this quarter. Highlighted case, I think for all of us, was the Rancho de Napa illegal entries and burglaries. Fortunately, although those incidents are uncommon for burglars to go into occupied residences, there was still no injuries, there was no people crimes associated with it, and the amount of loss was actually pretty low. Those events are still under investigation and unfortunately haven't led to any arrests, but they did provide us an opportunity to go out with the mayor and Steve to give a presentation to the folks at the trailer park, give them some tips on home security, communication, and some ideas on how to react to emergencies. For traffic enforcement and collisions, total number of traffic citations increased from nine last quarter to 14 this quarter. Parking citations increased slightly from 58 to 62 this quarter. Total citations issued over last year for the same time period have increased 12%. The number of traffic collisions decreased from six in the first quarter to two this quarter, and there were no accidents in town involving injuries. To address some, just for the future, we plan to try to bring in some, I want to have some of our motor guys from American Canyon come in and work some overtime just to address some public concerns with, we've been getting a lot of complaints mainly on stop signs, some of the bicyclists in town having some issues, and so later on this month, we're going to try and have some of those motor guys come in and do a little targeted enforcement in those areas to help out. And I believe that's it, unless there's any questions.
Any questions, council? I was going to mention that I was certainly aware, the council was, about the increase in patrols of some of the intersections that are most problematic, and so hopefully folks are getting that message.
Yeah, there's been a lot of citations issued and warnings as well lately, especially down here on Yount, where it seems to be the main problem.
And that's really, it's in response to some resident complaints primarily, I think, so.
Yes.
If folks are upset that it feels like we're cracking down, well, it's to protect the folks that are living in those intersections.
Yeah.
And again, one of the issues is when school gets back open, that's a pretty busy area for kids walking to school, so we need to get people's attention on that now.
Yeah, and I may put something out if possible in the newspaper just to kind of warn the citizens that the motors are going to be working, so they kind of have a heads-up and aren't surprised by the blue uniforms in town.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your report. That's it for our presentations for this evening. We don't have any public hearings, so we're going to move right on to item 10, administrative regular items. And our first item is a concept review, the French Laundry concept for 6610, 6612, Washington Street, and 6640, Washington Street as well. And just a reminder, this is a very preliminary concept review where the applicant is coming forward to get some feedback, both from staff and from council. This will be the first time we've had a chance to see this and discuss it, so nothing's going to be formalized or decided tonight, but it's going to be an open concept discussion. So with that, I'll invite staff to give a staff report, please.
Thank you. As you noted, this is a concept review, a proposal to rezone a portion of Yount and Weber to a new commercial zoning district that would be referred to as retained commercial. It would involve the last three properties in town that hold the retained use overlay zone at the French Laundry Bordeaux House and Lavender Inn. Up on the screen is a graphic of the existing French Laundry site and the adjacent site to the south that has two single-family residences on it. The genesis of this application was when the applicant approached staff with the idea of some flexibility for improvements to the French Laundry that would take place on and near adjacent to the French Laundry. That has not been fully developed, or even in the beginning stages of it yet, so, and is not the topic of discussion tonight, but that's what got this topic going. And with the recommendation of staff, none of the existing commercial zone districts would apply to the proposal that they were advancing, and staff suggested a comprehensive rezoning of the remaining retained use and retiring that zone district altogether. There are a number of opportunities that are presented in that rezone, that proposal, and they include, these are the last three, and I'll go to another graphic here, just to show you. This is the Creek Street, Washington, French Laundry, get rid of this thing, Bordeaux House, and then coming around the corner, Lavender, with the residential parcel between Lavender, or excuse me, Bordeaux and the French Laundry, forming this L shape. At one time, there were 11 sites in town that are described in the general plan that were included in the retained use overlay. These are the last three of those. There were a total of 13 uses within those 11 sites. All of them have been incorporated into other zone districts such as the newly-formed Old Town Commercial, relatively new, about 10 years ago, and the more recent planned development zoning district. Otherwise, zone districts are, properties were down here at, this was a retained use at the, where Cindy Gates offices, was incorporated into the RSC Zone District, as well as the Heston Site. And then, the only other one would be the Knight Property, where Vineyard Vintage Oaks Subdivision has been entitled, and that went to its underlying mixed residential zoning district and put that into effect. So what we have here are the last three of these zone districts. Staff sees this as an opportunity to provide a buffer between the central core commercial district and the residential districts that are represented in Old Town and to the east of Yount Street. It would form a continuous, more or less, link down Washington. This would form an unfragmented zone district, but it would also provide a better link to the north end of town at Old Town Commercial Zone District. The status quo for these uses that are presently on these sites would remain. All of these uses are, generally speaking, maxed out on their FAR and parking open space, so there's not going to be a rush of applications to remodel these uses and do anything other than what is there now, except the new zone district would provide for expansion onto this residential parcel. Now, this parcel, is noted in the staff report, is non-conforming in several aspects, setbacks to the buildings, parking, open space. So it's an older-developed lot that, you usually don't see two single-family dwellings on one parcel, it's an unusual configuration, and because of the way they are on there, there are several non-conformities. It's an opportunity to clean up this lot with the non-conformities it does contain and recoup that housing off-site. Expansions to existing zones, existing uses that are adjacent to this parcel, as I noted, are possible, but those would have to conform to the new zone district that are generally the commercial standards. It was suggested in the staff report that the only one that would be looked at as far as relaxation of a existing standard would be the front yard setback. Other opportunities that are presented by this rezone include, should the French Laundry elect to do improvements that would involve this lot, it's an opportunity to address the non-conforming parking standard they have in effect right now. They have an onsite parking space that actually goes into an easement onto this lot, containing a total of seven parking spaces. They would be required to have 21 right now under the existing zoning requirements. And depending on the number of seats that they would add through any expansion, we would be looking at potentially up to somewhere in the neighborhood of 45 parking spaces, and those, the existing deficit and the new need would both be addressed by, right now the proposal is to perhaps construct some parking across, on the lot across the street where a portion of the farm is located now. Would also, as I noted, there would not be a net loss of the housing stock in that we, there's opportunity to recoup those units off-site, and perhaps as part of the, depending again on how the development or improvements in the scope of the number of seats that would be added, we would be looking to add to the Housing Opportunity Fund through an in lieu fee based on those, that incremental increase in seats. I've already mentioned the elimination of a nonconforming dwelling group, and it would also be an opportunity to underground the overhead, this portion of Washington along this entire stretch between Creek and Vandeler Park. So this rezone, and I've alluded to the potential for development, that it's not really under discussion at this point, what the rezone does is set the stage to allow such an application to be tendered and then considered later on. So what is being asked tonight is presentation of the concept and comments and direction from the town council on the concept to continue on and apply for a rezone itself, which will trigger a sequo process that would include traffic studies and a couple of other studies. So prior to getting involved in that, that effort, the applicant is seeking your direction.
So if I understand correctly, the trigger of this whole discussion is if the council is willing to at least consider creating this new zone and allowing then the potential for this type of renovation and expansion. If the council shows no interest in that rezoning, then there's not much point in talking about the rest of it, is that accurate?
That's correct.
And if we are interested in at least considering the rezoning, we don't need to get into the specifics and details of what's being proposed or what might not be proposed yet because we're not talking specifics. We're just talking about if we say yes to a potential rezone, then you're trying to get the temperature of the council for consideration for this general concept, and nothing agreed tonight is actually approving anything.
That's correct, and the expectation would be if the rezone were to go ahead, that the uses would remain as they are, that's known, the existing uses, and the residential parcel, there would be an expectation that it could be developed and expanded onto by either the French Laundry or Bordeaux House from either direction, it's adjacent to both.
Okay, and before we move on, Vice Mayor would like to read a statement about his position.
Yeah, I apologize for not doing this before we started the item. I do want to disclose that I am the co-owner of the Yountville Deli, which leases space on Washington Street in Yountville. After consultation with the town attorney and receiving written advice from the Fair Political Practices Commission on April 7, 2011, we have determined that this action tonight does not have a direct impact on my leasehold interest or reasonably foreseeable material impact on my business entity, and as a result, I will continue to participate in this item.
Okay. Thank you. Any more staff report?
I did want to note a revised narrative from the applicant that was distributed to the council, and I believe there was an email support.
Yes, I was going to address the email. Tom Andrew, were you about to chime in on that?
I can if you'd like, or you personally can do that.
Go ahead.
What I would like to say, as this is a unique situation, town staff did reach out to all of the affected properties and consult with them and let them be aware of what potentially could happen and seek some input from them. The email you've seen is from Jean, who is the property owner of the Bordeaux House. She expresses support for the project. We've also spoke quite a bit with Shelley Post-Claudel, who is the four sisters with Lavender. While we don't have anything in writing, Ms. Post indicated that anything that offered a little more flexibility and the ability for her property to stay current and meet changing market trends would be received. One thing Bob didn't address is that there's some odd limitations in the retained use, and when you are trying to attain financing and long-range planning, some financing folks look at that and you have to explain a retained use, so this cleans it up. And what we're really, you know, really focusing on is the fact that the B&amp;B use and restaurant use, which have been historically a part of this community for a long time in those areas, will continue. And as Bob's addressed, really, the only thing we're really ultimately looking at is the fact that there is some potential for the redevelopment of the very small parcel. Staff's been very direct with the applicant at when and if, and I will stress if, because the rezone is simply the rezone. If you provide direction to do that, we will move forward with the public hearing to do that, but that in itself does not necessarily mean that anything will happen or change on the parcels until such time as the applicant would bring an application forward. And then, as Bob has indicated, we would be addressing what would be required with the housing, the relocation of the housing, housing in lieu for the growth, utility, undergrounding, and then the parking. And again, that's, we've been very straightforward, the applicant understands that, and from a staff perspective, we believe that there's a vehicle for the applicant to address and mitigate those issues. So as you can see from this perspective, staff sees this as a very positive, and I do kind of agree with Bob, it's really a cleanup of an existing situation, and many of the businesses would like to know that they have a little bit of ability to update or modernize should the need be. And when their language was written on retained use, it's kind of a little, little tight on what's an expansion and what's an addition, and ultimately, parking and ability to provide parking will be the control mechanism on any of the other parcels when it comes to the ability to do anything differently or expand what they may be doing now.
Any outreach or comment from the resident at 6621 Jefferson? The only other adjacent?
The applicant may be able to talk more about that.
And I realize also that there's plenty of time moving forward, but it would be nice, since we've heard from all the other immediately adjacent affected parties, so, Vice Mayor?
Well, I was also curious about the adjacent residents around Lavender, if there is a potential for intensification that borders them. I don't know if they're notified, or, I'm not saying if you think that, but were they, I don't know.
There will be, when we move forward, and that's a good example, this is the direction. When we go to the public hearing format, there will be all the normal, you know, you'll see a lot of the staff report again.
We haven't done that yet.
But this is the idea, before we even go down that, is, you know, as, as I think the mayor asked, if there's no interest in it, then it's done, we don't go there. If there's an interest, then all of the residents within the normal radius for reporting in that area will be notified.
Okay, was there more?
I did have one more thing I wanted to talk about, the structure of the retained commercial zone. We envision it being pretty much a status quo situation for the uses that exist on the properties they're on, but we would also envision the uses to remain in the same type, now the same type they are at this point, meaning we would structure this to where those uses would be by right, where any other change of use in the future would have to go through an entitlement process. Proposed commercial and residential uses other than uses existing at the time of establishment are required to be approved by the town council per the master development plan process. The existing commercial uses may be expanded to adjacent parcels within the same zone district, not occupied by an existing commercial use with the approval of a use permit. And then last, zoning standards shall be consistent, I mentioned that, with the exception of the front yard setback. And I, and existing nonconforming building aspects may be maintained as they are now. And I was going to mention that the retained use, Steve touched on this, the retained use overlay is kind of a quasi-nonconforming type of zone district that sometimes confuses insurance companies and lenders, and they're not sure what it is. Some jurisdictions are very strict about nonconforming uses, and they actually are waiting for them to be amateurized out of existence to become conforming, and that's what they're used to reviewing often, and it creates a problem when someone is refinancing or attempting a loan or getting insurance. So the cleanup of these zone districts is straightforward, zone that they're permitted by right uses would remove that ambiguity.
Other questions about the staff report from council at this time? So I want to try to clarify again exactly the potential action. If, if a rezone is approved by the council, that triggers nothing else by itself, that just changes the status from a retained use, a nonconforming retained use, to one that now qualifies under the new zone, is that accurate?
That's true.
And then anything within that new zone, any application, would then proceed as normal with all the other steps that would be required by an applicant?
That's true, and the reason we're talking about any type of proposal beyond just the rezone and then we wait to, for whatever, or if anything ever happens beyond that, is that our ordinance requires a rezone be accompanied by some concept of the potential development that could occur as a result of that rezone.
Or else why have the rezoning?
Yes.
Right, okay. With no other, oh, not, Councilor Dornbecker?
From what I understand, we are not approving the rezoning this evening. What we are doing is saying that we could see it going forward if there's a public hearing, is that correct?
It's a concept review of this idea of a rezone, and you would, you would be giving feedback as to whether you would entertain an formal application and go through a hearing process on it.
But.
Nothing is being decided tonight.
But we are not changing the zoning this evening.
You are not.
We would still need to go through a regular process for that, but if, if there's no interest in even going through that process, that's what staff and the applicant, potential applicant, is looking for tonight.
I just wanted that clarification, thank you.
With that, even though this isn't a public hearing, I'm going to certainly invite the applicant and any members of the public that would like to comment on it, so we'll start off with the applicant, please. Potential applicant.
It's an interesting process. Good evening, Mayor Dunbar, Vice Mayor Chilton, Councilmember Dornbecker, Hall, and Mueller, town staff. My name is Eric LeLavoie, I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Thomas Keller Restaurant Group. And for those of you that don't know me, a little bit of history, I've been working with Thomas for eight and a half years. I'm originally from New York, but I began my tenure with him, working two months at the French Laundry back in 2003 in anticipation for opening new restaurants in New York. 2006, Chef Keller asked me to, asked me to take a promotion to the Chief Operating Officer position, come out to Yountville, work in headquarters and oversee the company, so I moved out with my wife and then seven-month-old son, and have been working in Yountville ever since. And I'm here tonight representing the French Laundry as applicant for this conceptual approval, and have been in conversation with Steve Rogers, Bob Tierney, and Sandra Smith for a number of weeks, soliciting their input and trying to understand what would be required as we imagine possibilities for the future of the French Laundry. And as a matter of background for you, in 2014, the French Laundry will celebrate its 20th anniversary under Chef Keller, 35 years as a restaurant, and that is sort of a monumentous occasion that served as a catalyst for us to start talking about cementing its legacy. What could we do to continue to elevate our guest experience, bring it into a new generation and for generations to come? And we like to imagine great things, and great things might require some change. So we talked to staff to understand if that were going to happen, what would we need to do, and could we take advantage of the neighboring parcel that currently holds these two residences on 612, 6612, Washington, which the French Laundry owns? Could we utilize that parcel in future development for the French Laundry? That future development may bring about an enhancement to the dining room, additional seats, primarily would involve enhancements to the kitchen and facility so that we could do greater and greater things in being responsible to our position as one of the leading restaurants in the world. Clearly, we recognize that that would require a rezoning of that specific parcel, and we understood that also we'd have to come before you for consideration of a conceptual approval. We've done no formal planning, there's been nothing drawn, we've only imagined possibility, and we're here tonight really to solicit your input and feedback so we can better understand what we might have to do if it ever got to that level. At the same time, we're keenly aware of the town's significant concerns regarding parking and housing, and we are prepared to address what would likely be required enhancements to both, or certainly a responsibility to, to replace housing that might be displaced by changing that residential parcel. And we have options available to us, nothing definitive, again, because nothing has actually been decided. So really, I'm here before you to ask for some, some feedback, and I think this process of us coming to staff and working with the town in advance of anything being done should hopefully allow for a more collaborative and successful project if it ever gets there.
Any questions specifically of our applicant tonight at this point?
I do have one. In this grand imagining of what could be, I thought I got the impression from the staff report that you were thinking of building a whole new building that would be the restaurant, is that correct?
It is a possibility that we've considered, at least a new building that might be a new dining room, the existing dining room serving another purpose. But again, until we really lay out all the blocks on a piece of paper, nothing is certain, but that's certainly, that's something that we have considered, yes.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, yeah, I guess one of my questions in this grand imagining is, as you own a very large parcel of land that is already zoned for such a purpose directly across the street, so is that not within the grand imagining? I'm just, this, this concept was not what I had ever foreseen coming, so I'm kind of curious why this is.
Good point, and I think that it's likely a question that others may have. I would call attention to the fact that while there is an implied sense of ownership for both, they are distinct entities, where the French Laundry does not own the parcel across the street, it is currently leasing it for its farm and garden. And we have thought about many, many possibilities, and it is the one that we are currently proposing that we have determined is the, the best use of our resources and would ensure the greatest success for the future of the French Laundry. I should also address a question you asked earlier, Vice Mayor, about feedback from neighbors. I know that Chef Keller did speak to his closest neighbor, who I don't know personally, and while we don't have any formal feedback, I understand it was a good conversation, and that neighbor was perhaps going to be here this evening, I don't know if he is.
Are you speaking of the Hamels, or?
No.
No, you're another neighbor.
Are you talking about next to his house?
Next to his house, yes. And I understood that he was open to hearing what would become of this, and we may have a more formal response from him in the future.
Okay, I think that's it for now. I do want to invite others to speak, and I noticed that we do have another member of the public here. Welcome, come on up.
Oh, y'all know me, I'm Rose. I talked to Thomas about this, and I'm hoping you guys all consider it, you know, I mean, more business in town, come on, what's it going to hurt, you know? Makes me happy, makes everybody else happy, yeah, I understand parking, but he's really considerate about parking, it's usually just somebody coming in that's taking a picture that decides to leave their car in my driveway, other than that, he has no control over that, you know, unfortunately, but, you know, I've known him for as long as he's been here, and I would really like you guys to consider his plans. I don't think it would damage anything, so, that's all I got to say, my family's happy about it, we're happy about it, so I'm leaving it in your hands.
Thank you very much, thanks for coming here and sharing your comments. Any others? There's only one other option, but he, he's media, not public tonight. Still both, but with. But with that said, it looks like we'll come back and have discussion with the council. I'll invite Councilwoman Moller to start comments and give some conceptual feedback. And if you could, we could all address specifically both the potential rezoning concept and then maybe in a very general sense, the potential application, since we're not really dealing with any specifics on that part yet. Councilwoman Moller?
I'm certainly in favor of taking this to the next step to see what the plans are and what we can work out that's really gonna favor everything. I think that this proposal, it allows protection for the neighbors without restricting businesses that really are gonna contribute, you know, to the interest and richness of our town. So I think there, there's a very good balance there. I think it also promotes the continuity of Washington Street as our commercially oriented Main Street. It continues that on. Also, the historical character, the French Laundry has that historical designation is the same as with the Lavender House. So to incorporate those officially as, in a commercial area makes a lot of sense. The real carrot for me is this additional parking that is in this proposal. Forty to 50 spaces on Weber is really, I really would like to see that as we move forward be an important part of this plan somehow because it's really going to make this whole neighborhood less congested and it's very important. Also, regarding the, the housing, just in general, I'm generally more favorable in if housing is gonna go on the parcel on Jefferson Street, to make that fit into the neighborhood, perhaps single-family residences is where I'm kinda leaning right now instead of multiple duplexes. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hall, comments?
Yes, and thanks to the applicant and the public for coming tonight. I did, and I wanted to at least comment that John Hammel, who is the resident behind the parcel, actually works for me at Cliff Lady Vineyards and reached out and asked about tonight and whether he should be here because the Olympics are on and he had a very difficult time deciding whether he was gonna pull himself away. I didn't actually speak to him directly. He left me a voicemail. I left him one and returned one. Basically, what was articulated by the town staff and what the decision or what we're doing tonight with regards to the conceptual idea, I said, "There will certainly be time for your opinions to be heard in a public format." And I know Thomas had reached out as well. So he did opine and say, "Hey, you know, I've got the call, I'm okay." He did that as an employee versus anything else. So that was, nice to at least hear that from him and also from your other neighbor. What I would say is I'm, I'm very for the concept. I, I think it's a bright idea. You know, the commercial zone of Washington Street or making Washington Street, you know, more completely commercial, that, that parcel there is strange in its nature. And I'm glad to hear that the French Laundry actually owns it. It's not one of the other entities with different partners and all of that because it probably will make the concept, if it moves forward, easier to develop. So I'm, I'm open and welcome to consider the, any, any change in the zone that you might propose or the zoning change. Also, along with Councilwoman Moller, I think that in addition in parking, if something could be identified, certainly it's gonna be necessary, you know, we already have a challenge with parking in this town. Opening something up there on Weber, I think some of the other concepts that are going around, around extending Weber over to the bike path, I mean, that's just gonna create more continuity throughout the community and giving our guests and residents who are trying to get around, move around town, it'll give more connectivity between north and south. And so I, I think that would be a useful use of that space back there because I'm not exactly sure how it's, how it would be laid out in your concept, but that would be something I'm interested in as well. On the housing element, I mean, it is to single-family residents, I'm, you know, without having something in front of us, I'm not exactly sure how that would work out on the parcel down on Jefferson Street as it was presented, at least in the, in the staff report. I think it's the vacant lot down on Jefferson and Monroe, if I recall correctly. That being said, you know, if we could certainly replace the existing housing that we'd be losing, I know there's a, a serious push to keep residents in town and not have them move out of town and make this just a business or a tourist town. So that being said, that, that would be an important part of any plan that I would like to, to see come forward. But the only question I would have with regards to that is the timing of that recovery. I know there's two units there now and if we were gonna allow this concept to go forward, I would hope that we'd be able to at least see some sort of fast track on how we would replace the units going forward. Outside of that, I think it's a, it's a smart move and I look forward to seeing what comes forward, hopefully something if we're gonna rezon it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dornbecker?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your participation to the residents who've come. I also am open to the discussion about the rezoning and I'm also concerned about the parking. The, I'm, I'm also hoping that we don't lose that wonderful garden because of parking. That would be heartbreaking to me. But, and because we are now required to develop 17 new homes available by law under California state law, it's important that those homes be replaced because that's, that makes the number 19 that we need to develop and, and have for future residents. And I would hope that they could be done possibly in affordable housing way. But I certainly am open to the idea that we would remove a statute that is sort of a makeshift and, and replace it, making it very clear what all of the, you know, what all of the boundaries are in the statutes that, about the properties, but in retained use. So the next step is to have more public comment and I'll be interested to see what those are, but I'm sure that the level of quality that Chef will, and you will bring to the redo, if you do it, in the grand imagining, I'm sure would be elegant and wonderful. So I have no problem with that. So I look forward to the next few steps.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Well, I have to say my general feeling initially is not favorable. I, I, I recall on the Pedrone and Washington Street parcel that has three commercial sites, and just sort of looking up there around it, we had a great concern about, you know, the constant pressure of taking commercial activity and moving it to other places in town since we have very little property left to develop. I think my biggest concern really has to do with the intensification. The parking, I think Councilwoman Moller said it, is the most attractive concept here is that there's clearly a parking issue. I think you pointed out the, the ratio, that there should be 21 parking spaces for what's there now and there's seven. But I, you know, I, I have the concern of, of rezoning residential property because that's what we're talking about into a commercial property. Where, where does the line get drawn after that? So I do have full faith of the quality that you, you all would bring, but at this point, I'm not comfortable with the idea of taking residential Old Town and rezoning that as
Thank you. Couple of comments I'll make that haven't already been stated because generally speaking, I, I support the idea of considering a rezone concept to remove the, it's almost a stigma attached to these retained uses. And there's confusion that we can eliminate without jeopardizing the integrity of the parcels or the neighborhoods, I believe. That's specific to the rezoning. Then the concept, the very general concept that's being presented, I, I do have some questions. Generally speaking, I think I would support looking at your thoughts, certainly, because I'm not gonna presuppose any, any negative consequences. But as the Vice Mayor brought up when he asked about the ownership of the, we'll call it the garden property, if there's not control of that parcel in order to potentially put some of this concept there, how do we then know for sure that the 40 spaces that we're talking about can actually be put there? So there's some question about that. Either you have control or you don't have control of that parcel. So there needs to be some clarification with that. Also, I, I want to commend staff for, and also for, for you and the applicant for even doing this. I wish more potential applicants came to the town and talked through a concept to make this process clearer for everyone and so that you can address before spending a lot of time and money on some of the very specific things. And I think staff's done a very good job of, of protecting our interests as, speaking for the council and the residents, parking being principal. Removing employee and, and guest parking from the side streets in Jefferson, I think would be a big plus for Old Town. There's no question about that. How that happens, we will be discussing. I, I don't share the Vice Mayor's concern specific to the issue of potential change to that one residential parcel. I see it as the same thing we approved just a couple of blocks south when we approved the Heston development. I realize they have a single unit there, but there was a net loss of, of units on that parcel. But that site always stood out as an odd residential parcel surrounded by commercial and I see this one as a similar parcel. So there's willingness to consider some kind of alternative. I am as equally concerned as the rest of the council about what that means with the housing stock. I would be opposed to losing it altogether or even diminishing it by one. I would be more in favor of even taking advantage of not only replacing these two, but potentially seeing one or two more added, especially if we're talking about the Jefferson Monroe parcel. When that was brought back, brought before us some time ago on a whole different project, there was discussion about potentially four units on that site, two single-family homes and two in-law type units. That's the kind of concept that I think would be even more favorable. If that parcel could handle it then, maybe it can handle it now. So a couple general thoughts. I will also, again, as the council as a whole will want to do, hear from all the neighbors, not just the immediate commercial neighbors, but Creek Street, Jefferson, those that are impacted. So I think the outreach that I'm expecting and I'm sure we'll get is gonna be important because we are talking about Old Town, which does carry a little bit extra sensitivity to this council as we're trying to protect the integrity of that, that area. So what I think we're hearing though, as a whole, is we're open to moving forward with the concept of this new proposed zoning. And that means it's up to the applicant, of course, but I think that process of formally applying a concept for redevelopment could potentially move forward. Again, just by us considering and even potentially granting the rezoning, that doesn't guarantee anything beyond that. So just so everybody's clear on that point. Does staff need any additional guidance from us? Is that it? I think, I think we're good then. So thank you very much for coming and, and I, I expect we will be seeing this zoning concept in the future. So thanks very much.
Thank you very much. I, I forgot to say one thing, which is...
If you could come up to the microphone for us, please, just to get it on the record.
Thank you for your feedback and certainly we will continue to work in collaboration with staff. I neglected to mention that I did speak to Chef Keller, who expressed his regret for not being here and I'm sure you can imagine how dear to his heart this is, this project. And I would certainly hear about it if I didn't let you know that he's sorry. Thank you.
Fair enough. Thanks, thanks very much. Okay, so that's 10A. We're gonna move on to item 10B, Parks and Recreation Marketing Plan. Staff report, please.
Good evening. Before you tonight is the Parks and Recreation Department Marketing Plan. And as you may recall, during the strategic planning process in 2010, one of the items that was approved was for staff to begin working on a marketing plan for the Parks and Recreation Department. Over the past year, staff worked with our internal resources and performed the needed outreach, information gathering, and drafted the plan without a third-party consultant as though we did not budget for that. The plan consists of several facets, which I'll get into, but at the majority, the items within the plan are estimated to be completed in June of 2013. But overall, it really represents more of an institutional change that will carry on long before the actual items in the plan are achieved. So I'm hoping you had a chance to read through it, so I'm not going to go through item by item of the plan with you, but just shoot out some interesting things that I want to bring to your attention, the public's attention. So obviously, a marketing plan is very important and it's very important to our department's long-term sustainability and fiscal sustainability. So your direction to us each year through our approved budget is that we bring in revenues that offset some of the fees, through user fees that offset some of our operational costs. A little bit of background, the California Parks and Recreation Society did a statewide survey in California at the end of 2009. And 98% of California households visit a park each week, 68% once a month, 26% once a week, and 50% of California's households participate in some sort of recreational programming at least once a year. So we conducted our own survey in 2012. 76% of our respondents do use our programs and services and 84% of those who responded use our parks at least once a month. It's a pretty high return there on those surveyed. So our marketing strategy in the past was traditionally focused on our existing customer base and was fairly inconsistent. There was limited staff training, limited budgets, and we just kinda got into a rut, as I see it. So the goal of this plan is to really bring us out of that rut. We've already implemented a lot of the, a lot of great things, but we have a lot of room to grow as well. So our new brochure and flyers and the website and different marketing tools, but this really points us in the right direction. So the section, section is our community profile, which I won't go too much into because you all know our census data here in Yountville. It also talks about our customer profile, so looking at who the Parks and Recreation Department currently serves. And 46% of the people who use our Parks and Recreation programs live within the town limits and that's across all of our program areas. Another 50% live within the city of Napa and then another 4% are those in the Napa Valley. So less than 1% of our current customers come from outside of Napa County. A large portion, portion of our city of Napa use comes from Yountville Elementary School's utilization of, the students' utilization of our summer camps after school and also our enrichment classes. So demographically, our largest population registering in our current programming are youth ages five through 12. And overall, in the last two years, we've seen with the opening of Community Center and some different changes in the department, increase in utilization of 40%. So Section 3 talks about challenges and opportunities that we assessed and saw and I'll just touch on a couple of those. So really, the resident versus non-resident services. So the demographics of Yountville make it very challenging to sustain recreational programming just on our resident population. So we do really rely on people coming into town, whether they're coming from Napa, they may go to our school, they may work here in our town, but they aren't technically residents. Some of them might be a second homeowner, but they're not here full-time. And most of our rental bookings are people who are not residents of Yountville, the majority of them. So in order to sustain the services that we really want to provide to our residents, we have to bring in those non-residents to offset that need. For example, in last year, 2011, we served over 7,000 people in our, in the pool season and resident use was only 33% of that. So kinda shows you, we want to be able to provide the service for the residents who do live here, but in order to recoup some of that cost, we have to open it to non-residents. So the other one I'll, next one I'll talk about is brand identity. So really, what do we do and who are we? And who is it that our public wants us to be is really what we're looking at there. Increasing awareness of the department and really having a commitment as a global whole, and council included, on what the main goals of our department really are and what are we supposed to be to the community here. Number five I'll touch on is our competitors. It's unique here that we have over 900 of our residents... It's unique here that we have over 900 of our residents in the Veterans Home, and they have a lot of services on-site there, and so I see that as competition. I'm not necessarily going to draw a veteran down to the community center when that same type of service is provided right on their campus. And most of the time, it's at little or no cost. And although we do have free programming, some of our programs are also, cost money. We also have a higher-than-typical number of second homeowners here, so they're not here full-time. You might not think that's competition, but I can't count them towards my potential customer pool either. And also because we rely so heavily on non-residents to balance our enrollment, we're competing with other Parks and Recreation agencies, we're competing also with other private businesses like dance studios, gymnastics studios, even a lot of private development coming up in the areas of sports. So those are all potential competitors as well. On the facility rental side, we've, we're establishing a really terrific niche in that low-to-mid-price wedding range. We offer a different type of service than, say, the Vintage Estates or the Velagio. We have a beautiful venue, they get the Napa Valley feel, but they don't have to use our own caterer, so there's a lot of benefits there. But those other agencies or businesses within the town who also provide wedding services can be a competitor in that respect. And also just touch on customer barriers. So in our survey, we took some great feedback from that. 25% of those surveyed said they didn't find anything that interested them in our current offerings, and 14% don't participate because they didn't know about it. That's an issue. So when asked about program affordability, 10% thought that our prices were too high, 12% thought they were too low, and 77% thought they were just right. So it tells us that our price points really aren't a barrier to most of the people that we surveyed. So I will skip now to Section 4, which starts talking about what the key concepts are going to be of this plan and touch on a few things there. So obviously, advertising is a big one for us, and the biggest piece of that is based on the survey results and the customer data that we've been collecting over the past two years. We chose three areas in the next 12 months to really focus on, and those are our over, our local 50 and overpopulation, wedding planners and customers within a 200-mile radius of Napa Valley, and then also valley-wide parents with youth under the age of 13. So focusing on advertising, print and collateral materials, we're working on continuing to grow that and also to build the quality of that. We're going to be starting an e-newsletter that will go out every month. We're going to be getting out in the public eye more at events, not just our own, but others as well. We'll also be looking at how to better utilize our website, and we are getting ready to start working on social media for the town as a whole through our existing website vendor. And then also marketing co-ops and sponsors. So how do we better engage our current partners and seek out where we have partners that we can still collaborate with? So some of our current partnerships are the Napa Valley Adult School, the U.S. Tennis Association, the Veterans Home, Kiwanis. We have a lot of partners, but we need to sit down with them and figure out how we can better serve each other's needs. So that was Action Plan 1. Action Plan 2, I touched on print, collateral materials. The e-newsletter is Action Plan 3. Action Plan 4, events and activities. So overall, increasing the awareness of our department at local and regional events. So not just focusing on the events that we have here, but for example, Cope Kids Day in Napa. So we know we serve a huge non-resident population from Napa, we need to have a presence there as well. Five, we talked about the website. Social media was six, and then the marketing and cooperative sponsorships was seven. I also included in your packet the Parks and Recreation Need Survey that we collected our data from. We'll continue to do this type of survey annually, hopefully increasing the feedback every year. I also included the results from that survey for your review, and then also the annual report that was presented to you a few months back. So before you, tonight, again, is the marketing plan for the department. I'm asking for your approval on that. It did go to the Parks and Community Services Commission in June, and they did think very favorably of the report and thought that it would be user-friendly and easy to implement. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions of staff? Thank you for that, that report. Councilmember Mueller?
I thought it was very interesting from your survey that what seemed very favorable to people when they came to the community center, they came for community events and fitness. And so my question is, since that really kind of jumped out and they were pretty high numbers, I was just trying to go through your marketing plan and see where that, those two things are kind of focused within your plan. It seemed a little diverse. You might have a better idea of where it is, but-
So, so that's true. People that did respond are, we've currently captured them in those two areas. So I'm, in the plan, looking at not just how to sustain those people and grow those areas, but also how do I reach the people that I'm, we're not reaching. So the people who responded, we're continuing to build those areas, the fitness area and community events area, but we already see higher utilization in those areas.
Well, I guess my point is sometimes go with your strengths instead of, you know, I, don't ignore your weaknesses. I totally agree with that, but build on your strengths because that's what it seems to me people are looking for and telling you they like. So keep building that up a little bit, too, would be a suggestion I would give you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Hall, any feedbacks? Questions, I'm sorry, questions, yeah. Any questions about the report at this point? No, thank you. Councilwoman Dornbecker, a question?
Just in terms of the social media and, and also internet use and, and the older population in town, I'm wondering if there's a possibility that, you know, classes in computer might be something that might be, something you might consider offering? Is that-
It is. We've actually been in discussion with the library staff because they have computers obviously already on-site to see if that's something that we could potentially utilize, and that's still in the works. And we're also discussing different uses for different spaces at the community center and how to kind of adapt and change with the needs, and possibly that might be something that is added at a different time, but we, we're working on that. Thank you.
So the, I just wanted to confirm what I believe is, is the case. When I was looking at the suggestion for new programs, it was frustrating to see book club on there since we've had a literary club for some time now.
Yeah.
That goes to that outreach. You never have too much outreach.
Yeah.
But to that point about why some of these may not be offered and why some of those that are offered are continuing, it's often driven by your ability to get instructors for a particular program, not just whether we think it's a good idea or not. Because some of these on the list makes sense.
Yeah, a lot of it is driven by instructor interest, but it's also, you know, we're never willing to, we're always willing to try something, I guess is the right way to say. If we bring in a contract instructor to teach something, there's very little risk associated with that to the town financially, so we're willing to give it a try. But I think that it is limited to instructors who have interest, and some things that are more specialized may be priced way out of what we think is within the reasonable realm of what a customer or 10, if that's their minimum, will pay, for an example.
Well, and some of the things that come to mind that might make sense, and this maybe goes back to the Councilmember Mueller's point about whether you continue to drive toward what is strong or do you try to broaden that to other areas. You would, you would think maybe wine education, food education, cooking classes, things like that would make sense here in Yountville. That gets a little complicated, probably expensive, which people aren't necessarily looking at or are willing to pay, and then you need facility capability to pull a lot of that off. So some things are also just not practical for us, given our facilities.
Yeah, and you will see a lot of growth coming out in the next book. We had to add eight pages, which is pretty significant, but there are some cooking classes. We have a new instructor that we're bringing in, and we are trying to branch out and just try things, but a lot of it is finding the quality instructors to, to, to teach that.
Sure.
So, and there is a lot of, there is cost associated. There's not, everything can't be offered for free. So there's a market for some, and there's a market for others. So community events traditionally are free, but they also cost a lot to produce. So you have to kind of weigh that with bringing in the revenue that we have to sustain as well.
And coming back hearing-
And staff resources.
And hearing the council talk about cost recovery.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Got to balance that, find balance.
Right. I'll invite members of the public, if you'd like to comment on this topic right now, you're welcome to. Nope, okay. So feedback from council. We're being asked to accept this. Is there a discussion prior to any potential action? Councilmember Hall?
I'd just like to make a couple comments, and, you know, I, first of all, I want to say, I think it was a year ago when we got the initial marketing plan, and I, you know, I, I think back to that and looking at this, it's, it's, I won't say 180 degrees because it's not a complete about-face, but it is certainly a tremendous effort that was put forth, and it's clear, it's concise. I mean, you've gone out, you know your target, you know who your audience is, you'll be able to identify, and I'll use for Councilmember Chilton's benefit, the entire acronym of SWOT, which is you know your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. You know, you're engaging all your stakeholders. It's important in doing that. You need to understand what your market's going to be and how you involve all of us, including the council. I mean, I see in here you've got an action plan, you've got names, or as I like to put it, belly buttons, that you can identify the people that are responsible for seeing these actions through. All I would say is measure, 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 because you can't manage it if you don't. But I, I think it's a nice piece of work, and it tells us a lot about what we all believe, we know in the community itself, but certainly, it's, it's, it's come a long way from where it was a year ago, and I'm pleased to see it. And if there's any other comments, I'd like to put forth a motion.
Yeah, I think there are some more comments, if you can hold that thought. Councilmember Mueller, comments?
No.
Okay. Councilwoman Dornbecker, comments?
I want to commend you on this. I think it's a well-thought-out and very, you know, well-done. And I also want to point out that I see this positive trend building in the revenue. So in the, for example, the pool revenue in 2010 was $46,000, and 2011 is $51,823, and I expect it's going to be, you know, great for this season. Every, everything I see, almost everything I see, is, you know, definitely on the upswing, and I want to commend you on the effort you've put in, and this is very helpful, and we'll be, I'll be coming to talk to you about ideas.
Awesome. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Samantha, first of all, I'm going to agree with Councilmember Hall that where you are today is, is great to see, and I think it's the tangible goals of Action 1, 2, 3, 4, and it's very understandable of where you're going on that. And you're, I think you're making great strides in terms of the vision of what the department is and isn't and what you're selling out there, and I think you're absolutely correct. You're selling a product, and I think that we have to think of it that way. Got to sell something that somebody wants. And I, I think that, from what I've seen, I think 2012 is sort of your turning point is where things have, we've, we've seen things come to fruition. The summer camp program this year for the kids, it seemed to be very successful. The programming was successful, the attendance was successful. That's great. I just got a flyer in the mail today or yesterday about after-school program, the way it's being positioned, the way it's being overhauled with Homework Club. You guys are obviously listening. I think that's going to be very successful. So I was really happy when I saw that, and I meant to bring it up so we could show it, but I, when I saw that, I was very happy to see the way that was all structured. So congratulations, and I certainly am in support of what you've put together.
My only addition to all that is stressing the importance of this data collection, and that's something that we've really lacked. There was a lot of guesswork and assumption about what people wanted and how we were going to fund it and, and that type of thing, and as the community center itself has evolved, we've really made it a focus to figure out what makes sense, how do we best use that facility and, and serve the residents. So I think the ongoing collection of this information is going to be critical, too. So also, very supportive of how you've put this all together and been monitoring. And I think you and your entire staff is to be commended for the flexibility and the proactiveness that you bring. Just like you say, if you have somebody that wants to come and instruct, you try it, and if two people show up and then one goes away, you try something else. And a lot of communities can't have that kind of flexibility, so that's really a nice asset also.
Mayor and council, just a brief interjection. What you're seeing tonight, I think, reflects a significant organization culture change, and it's been something slow and coming in working with assessing not only what the strengths and weaknesses of our current programming offers, our facilities and staff, and then trying to put together a plan. I'm very proud of where the organization under Samantha's leadership, and you're taking some time, but you're seeing some fundamental things that are going to be implemented in the way we do business, and that is correct. This is a business, it's not an afterthought. And, you know, we do provide free things, and, you know, this community loves its free things. And in order for us to do that, we do need to make money on some things, and we do have, you've heard me say it before, that heckle and jibe situation where, you know, people want certain things, how do we do it? But I think you're seeing a fundamental understanding that we're going to survey our residents. We're going to try to understand. You know, our residents don't always follow through on the things that they say they're interested in. You know, they'll say they really want to participate in something, and we offer the program, and two people sign up. But it gives us a good feedback. So I just want you to know that, to me, we're turning the tide on where we're going. I don't see our organization as being passive anymore. We're trying to be proactive, a part of the community, creating community, as they like to say, but also trying to look at it from a business model where the parts that we have need to be run in a business sense while not forgetting that there's certain parts that are done to create community.
With that, is there action to be taken?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3049-12, approving the final Parks and Recreation Marketing Plan and directing the Parks and Recreation Director to implement this plan.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And thank your entire team.
I will, for sure. Thank you.
Yes, before we move on to the next item, I think we have a question from the audience.
Yeah, I wanted to know, I can make a little statement. I missed the opening because I had to work late today, so-
In regards to what item?
Uh, it's not an item. It's just something I wanted to say. Is that possible?
Well, we will bend the rules a little bit and let you come up. It's not on the agenda, so as long as it's not something that you're asking us to act on, if it's a public comment that we missed out on earlier.
Well, I don't know how you guys are going to take this, I don't know, you know?
So maybe I'll change my mind.
You can change your mind, I'll be fine. No, but I saw something today, and I've been watching it, and it's kind of breaking my heart, you know? We have some great businesses on that side of town, on the north side of town, and with all the construction going on. I went over and talked to a lot of the people that are working there, and they were telling me they've had two, four people in, some people didn't have any people in. And I was just wondering on their behalf if you guys would allow them, and I know you guys have a big deal about this, you know, putting some kind of sandwich board out there and let those people know. Because I saw people walking as far as the end of Redwood and then turn around and walk back. And I know how that feels because before you guys were so kind, as to put lights up towards Washington Street, towards the north side. I used to sit outside my house and hear people go, "Don't cross the bridge. Don't cross the bridge." So people wouldn't cross the bridge because they would see it would be so dark, it would scare them, I think. Well, that's, you know, and it's, this weekend, every hotel is booked to the max. There are so many, because there's a lot of release parties, there's so many people. It'd be nice, you know, maybe some of these people would like to take back their grandchildren and toy or, from Napa Valley, or, you know, a couple bottles of wine, but with all the construction, you think the whole place is under construction, like everything's closed down. So I just was wondering if you guys could just consider maybe-
If I could, I'd actually like to, to respond because we-
Before you do, before you do, I'll say, what we'll do here is we're going to treat this like the public comment portion that we have in the very beginning, which means-
And I'm sorry that I was late.
No, it's okay.
I just couldn't get out.
Which means we can't act on anything, but I can ask our staff to respond a little bit. We can't discuss it or come up with a plan because it's not agendized, but, but I will invite the manager to respond to your comments, so.
We've actually, I don't know that we're ahead of- We've actually, I don't know that we're ahead of Rose in her thinking and support, but we've had meetings with the property owner and actually have approved flexibility for them on temporary signage, including that they haven't followed through yet. We need a little help from them in terms of their management company, because we do realize they need a little help. And we've given them some opportunity to apply for.
And I have heard of some of that, okay? And I did hear of some of the things.
Yep. So, I mean, we're willing to work with them, and I guess they need to come.
And that's all I'm asking, you know. And I could get over there and talk to them again and stuff. It just made me sad to watch that, you know, for the last couple of days. And I'm thinking, we're right in the peak of our season. They should be right high.
We acknowledge the, the concern that you have and are willing to work with the property owner.
And that's all. I'm sorry. Didn't mean to interrupt your schedule in here, everybody.
That's all right. See how flexible we take the lead from our Parks and Community Services about flexibility? Even though we do have certain protocols that we have to comply with, so.
Thank you. And I understand that. I really appreciate your time, and I apologize for being late.
No. Thank you for sharing your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Now, you have to stay for the whole rest of the meeting. It's the trade-off.
And I'm going to stay for my next intelligent comment if you still have time.
Okay. So, with that, we are going to move on now to the Item 10C, Capital Improvement Program Discussion.
Excellent segue. Well, Mayor Dunbar, council, we're here to talk about our capital improvement program. I'm going to try to condense our binder down to 76 slides.
Seven or, seven or six? Is that what you said?
I wish.
Or 43 workshops. Your choice.
Right, exactly.
The common rule is two minutes per slide, so I hope you'll break that.
It'll be less. It'll be less. I do want to recognize a few people. For example, Jacob Solis is here. He's our Public Works intern. And over the last two years, he's done an excellent job condensing, putting this together. Lots more information. It's, it's hard to tell, but he's, it's been much more in-depth, detailed with information that we can use for making decisions on our capital improvement program. Also, Matt Rush, who's with Pound Management, was instrumental in putting this document together. They sort of divided it up and conquered to put this together. Also had input from Kevin Gaither, our new six-month, seven-months Public Works Manager, and Dawn Moore, our utility operations supervisor. This was also taken to the Parks and Community Services Commission for their review and comments. And we did get some input from the public. So, I just want to know there's some background to this. I want to start out by talking about a little background on the capital improvement program, which has been prepared since 1996, mostly by Coastland until recent years. Changes since the last capital improvement program that was presented to you last year. Go through the list of projects, talks about fund balances and deficits, and then have you review and discuss this. So, the purpose of the capital improvement program, it's a five-year planning, financial planning guide. It's a long-range management tool. We look at all the different funding sources, potential projects. And we want to leverage available resources, which could include grants or financing. And also, the, we have the Enterprise Fund, we have the gas tax, and we have the General Fund. And in a nutshell, it's to protect, preserve, enhance, extend the life of and improve the town's infrastructure. The capital improvement program's divided into categories. So, we have civic facilities, like buildings, community projects, which is all around the community, doesn't fit in one category. Drainage and flood control, parks and recreation, streets and transportation, water distribution, and then park, wastewater and water reclamation. Some of the changes since the last five-year capital improvement program is there's more information about the vehicles and equipment replacement program. So, Jacob's gone through and looked at all the vehicles, put them into our inventory. We're looking at a replacement schedule and how much it would cost to replace those vehicles. So, that gives us a good number of how much we should be putting in the budget, in the savings account, you might say, each year. There's been more coordination between the water and wastewater projects and the streets projects. We don't want to go put in a new sewer pipe or water line after we just overlaid a street. So, that's been better coordinated by Jacob and Matt. Drainage and flood control projects were prioritized based on the hydrology study that was presented to you early this year by Manhart Consultants. So, that will look at where do we spend our Measure A money? On June 19th, you adopted the budget, which included the capital improvement program for one fiscal year, the 12, 13 fiscal year. There's 34 projects and programs identified. There's seven funding sources. And this is $2.7 million, which is, you know, almost half of your General Fund budget. So, it's a major portion of the town's budget. It breaks down into $1.17 million for capital projects. This is mostly General Fund money that's been transferred into the capital projects fund. There's gas tax funds, which are mostly from gas tax the town collects based on population, and this has accumulated over the years. The Water Capital Fund is the, comes from the utility rates, same as the Joint Treatment Plant Capital Fund and the Wastewater Capital Fund. Now, on the Joint Treatment Plant Capital, that is split with the Veterans Home because they pay for half the cost of the treatment plant. So, the total's $2.7. Breaking it down into categories, in terms of civic facilities, the Equipment Replacement Fund. We mentioned before, we have lots of new equipment at the community center and community hall, but that needs to be replaced someday. So, we're putting money aside for that. We have the renovation of park restrooms this year. We're looking at civic facilities renovations, which I'll get more into. But for Fund 50, which is the General Fund, it's $175,000 this year in this category. Here's some of the equipment at the community center, heating, air conditioning. We have the geothermal system. We have, you know, essentially the, the infrastructure of the building, the roofs and everything. So, all that's being inventoried. We're putting together a placement schedule and a cost to see how much money we need to put aside each year. Park restroom renovations, the project we're going to look at this year. One of the big things is Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. So, do our doors have the push button that they needed? Are the, are the rest, do you have the bars around the drinking fountain? So, if somebody with a cane will, will see those without hitting them. So, we're looking at all that. And there's more detail in the capital improvement program. There's a project description for each of these, if people are interested in getting more details. Civic facilities renovation, I don't think the post office has been painted or stained since 1993 when it was built. So, we're getting proposals to do that. And it'll look same color as what we painted the pool. So, that's what we're, we're looking for, if anybody has any comments on that. Town Hall structural strengthening, we're working on the request for proposal. Town Manager Rogers, we'll be talking about that a little bit in our next item. Getting with the request for proposals, design, build, and, and that is in the five-year capital program to do that project. Some of the future projects, we scheduled a community center trash enclosure. This might be coordinated with the Bardasano for 1314. And then, these unfunded projects are, you know, we have description, we have a cost estimate, but we're not putting it in a year. But if this is something you're interested in, we can move it up into the budget, into the, you know, a certain fiscal year and discuss it. Such as the outdoor kitchen, the community hall, and the electric charging station at the community center. Next category is community projects. So, these are accessibility improvements program. This is something we do every year, pretty much. This year, we're looking at putting curb ramps in Washington Park, where we have shoulders where people park, but people have been using them as sidewalks. So, we're looking at having, to be ADA compliant, to put the ramps at the corners. Vehicle major equipment replacement program, this is trucks, but we're putting money aside for the Vector because that's such a big ticket item in the future. Slurry seal, park paths and parking lots, the creek behind the Hopper Creek condos and the school. And then the parking lot at the pool, we're looking at resurfacing and restriping that. And that'll just keep those in better shape, and so they don't deteriorate as quickly. Security system at various locations, Corporation Yard, Community Hall. And also, here at Town Hall, we'd have essentially card keys you can get in and out of the building. And then, tree, tree grades, curb gutter sidewalk replacement program. We're looking at starting the design of that project, Fund 20. This is divided up into Fund 20 and Fund 50. Fund 50's General Fund, Fund 20 is the gas tax. So, this is just one of the ramps or locations of one of the curb returns out at Washington Park after the slurry seal. This is one of the 2001 truck that we want to replace. That's the path behind Hopper Creek condos. We want to put a slurry seal there to help keep the, keep it from oxidizing and deteriorating. Putting security cameras out of the Corporation Yard, where we have lots of people coming and going for hazardous waste drop-off, maybe contractors. We have the, you know, different people coming and going through the, through Corporation Yard and treatment plant. This is the next section of curb gutter sidewalk, where trees have been uplifting the sidewalk. This is on the west side of Washington, between Yount and the driveway to V Marketplace. And you can see Pack Blues there in the background. So, we do similar to what we did just south of here in this section. In terms of future projects, Mercy Operations Center Improvement Program in 1314. Veterans Memorial Park Parking, this would be south of the park in 1315. Design one year, construct the next. Geographical information system and asset management, this is to get our, our assets, which are all of our infrastructure, our equipment, pipes, whether it's the treatment plant, into a database that we can have on the computer, and then we can update that more easily. And also run reports and queries. In terms of future unfunded, we have the townwide photovoltaic system, which we're, you know, not sure when that will move forward. And then utility undergrounding, that's an $8 million ticket that, you know, if we did everything that's identified in the resolution by the council to underground, would be a pretty big item. Moving to drainage and flood control, this is where the Measure A money comes in on most of these projects, but not all of them. Some, there's watershed assessment district money, and then also, if it doesn't fit into one of those two, it's not eligible, then we would look at General Fund money. Townwide drainage program, stormwater management plan, program. There's a new National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit coming out from the state. It was supposed to be out already, so we're, there's been joint power agreement meetings about that and what's the impact going to be in terms of new requirements from the state. So, we're looking at that. Hopper Creek sediment removal, this happens, CCC will be out there tomorrow and the rest of the week to remove sediment underneath Oak Circle and Mulberry, cut down the vegetation. But what we want to do is actually go through like we did a few years ago and have a contractor go in there and just remove a, a layer of sediment that's accumulated over the last few years. So, this will involve a lot of permitting. We're having negotiations with the Regional Water Quality Control Board and Department of Fish and Game right now. Velagio channel bank repair, I'll show you a picture of that next to the bike path. And then the hydraulic design permitting. What we've looked at is, we have about five or six projects identified in the hydrology study that we want to do the design and the permitting, and then in future years, come back and do the construction. And this will be Measure A funded. Townwide drainage program, this is in front of Naffey Lodge on Washington Street. We removed an old storm drain system and put in a new storm drain system and split the cost to developer. So, this is one of those opportunities that, because we had money in the budget, we could cost-share with a developer who's conditioned to do some of this work. This is the Vineyard Park during a flood, and so we're looking at stormwater management, sediment removal, keeping chemicals and pollutants out of the, out of the, not just runoff, but floodwaters as well. This is Hopper Creek before the sediment removal one year, and this is what it looks like after CCC is finished. This is, this is Velagio Channel out by Napa Style, the big brown sign for V Marketplace. And when they, when the flood control district removed the toolies a few years ago when they were getting ready to build the bike path, we saw there's a pretty steep bank there next to the bike path. And so, we'd like to do some stabilization to keep that from eroding and washing out the, the bike path. This is Oak Circle with, when Hopper Creek comes through during a past flood, you can see the guy, the crew is getting ready to get the backhoe and start scooping sediment out of the creek. So, I said, we had about five or six projects would help to reduce the amount of water that accumulates at this bridge and others in town and causes flooding down Mulberry and Oak Circle and other streets. Terms of next, over the next five years, we're looking at Fennel Culvert over to Bear Ditch. So, run from Hopper Creek to Bear Ditch would be at one diversion in 1415. Lower the pedestrian path along Heather, so that'd be north of Oak Circle. That would create some, some wider channel. And then restoration downstream of the railroad. This is near Washington, so it's along where the Thomas Keller Restaurant Group has the lease for the gardens. There's some erosion there where the old railroad ran. And we hope that by doing that project, we reduce the sediment that's accumulating on Hopper Creek near Oak Circle. Looking additional storage upstream of the railroad and Highway 29. This would be a detention basin that would help to meter out some of the water that comes through town. In the, the other diversion is at Oak Circle, 1415. There's the project on Washington Street. This would be the east side between Pedronee and the creek. This is unfunded at this time, but, you know, if, we may look at it in more detail since some development comes along and, and put that project forward. And then the diversion at Mulberry Street, we're not quite sure if this is going to make the cut in terms of, if we have enough money for, for Measure A, but we'll look at it. And moving to Parks and Recreation, Park Improvement Program, Yountville Community Park, we're replacing a fence there. The park open space at Heather and Oak Circle, want to redo the landscaping there. We have the Park Improvement Program, Park Equipment Replacement Program. Just like replacing vehicles, eventually, we'll have park equipment that's going to not comply with Americans with Disabilities Act or other requirements. It gets old. We have the Park Path Program. We're replacing parks around town or do, you know, with concrete we did this year. New park development, where we have some, some vacant land. I'll show you a picture of that. Swimming pool improvements, we're looking at some, you know, we do have a lot of equipment, and it does wear out. But we're also looking at the, the umbrellas out there and getting those replaced. Pedestrian path from Oak Circle to Mission, this would do the design of that, includes a bridge near Ad hoc. So, the construction would come in a following year. And then the resurface of the tennis course is completed. So, this is looking north from Oak Circle towards Heather and Hopper Creek. So, we want to redo the landscaping and paths and everything in this, this area, this open space. The, the path continues along the creek north of here. We have, want to put in some ADA compliant picnic benches. We're supposed to have one for every 20 picnic tables. And if we only have one park, we need to have an ADA compliant table. And for the most part, we have, but there's some places we want to do some new installations and replacements. This is a path south of Mission, as you can see the pedestrian bridge over by the Hotel Yountville. And it's not in very good shape, so we want to look at, you know, replacing this and making it a little more, less bumpy, you might say, less flooding. This is the open space south of Oak Circle, east of Hopper Creek near Heather. And so, we were just, had some meetings, and we're talking about, okay, what do we want to do with this area? This would also be part of the path that would go down to Mission. So, we're looking at, you know, higher landscape architect to look at some different options, talk to Parks and Community Service Commission, us, the neighbors, so on and so forth, and you, obviously. This is the pool, and the umbrellas are getting a little old and not ratty yet, but we want to put some money in there to get those replaced. We also have some, some pumps and motors that are getting a little long on the tooth, you might say, and so we'll need to do some replacements there. This is the new tennis court resurfacing, so they look good, and we're happy with how they turned out. And hopefully, the, the Parks and Rec program will be able to utilize these with some, some training for people. This is the alignment of the path between Mission, I'm sorry, Oak Circle at the north, down to Mission at the south. So, this is running behind, so you can see the Ad hoc is here and the bank is here. So, it started at the open space at Oak Circle, east of the creek. Would run along the flood wall around the Mobile Home Park, cross at a bridge towards Ad hoc, and then run along the west side of the creek down towards Mission. It would not be inexpensive, so we'll have permitting requirements. The bridge will need to have foundations, engineering, and then the construction after that. The only unfunded project here is the replaced tennis courts. And this is one that we, after doing the work we did this year, we may want to take this off the list. But it was in the, in the capital improvement program in the past, so it was there this year. Moving to streets and transportation, our pavement management program. This year, you've already awarded the contract. We're setting up the pre-construction meeting to overlay part of Mulberry, part of Fennel, part of California, or part of Washington, south of California. So, we'll be moving forward with that here pretty quick. Slurry seal and patching program, this is just to start the design for the next group of projects, which are listed in the CIP. Replace failing railroad-type curb and gutters that have been around town. This one would be in the west side of Washington, north of Humboldt. North Yountville Bike Route Project, we did get our environmental document approved by Caltrans, so we're moving forward with the design of that. And our street restriping project has been, we sent out a request proposal. We only got one proposal. It was six times the cost that we thought it should be. So, we're going to go back out to bid and ask some of our Public Works guys to do some of the work and see if we can bring the cost down. And we may be asking you for a budget adjustment if we award that project. But that's why we have contingencies.
And how much does a machine cost to do it ourselves? Is it really prohibitively high?
Yes. I mean, the, the way these companies do the work is they have a truck and actually has a spray arm and everything. So, it's, it's, it's pretty long distances of, of striping. So, it's not something that I would recommend purchasing because we wouldn't use it that often. I did talk to the city of Napa and asked them if they had the capabilities of doing this, and they were not able either. So, even the city of Napa doesn't have the equipment to do this type of striping work. This is Mulberry, looking east by the, you can see the sheriff's office there on the left. And so, this street will be ground up, and they'll put in new four inches of asphalt concrete because there's been so many cuts and potholes in the street that it's just gone beyond its design life. Similar will be on Vista. Then on, on Washington, south of California, will be a simple overlay, like they did with the Expansion Project. And Fennel, we'll do an overlay. And Fennel, we'll do an overlay where the affordable housing project was. Excuse me. This is the slurry seal truck, and this was the workout at Washington Park, and we have a number of, five or so more streets that want to design now and then do a construction in the next fiscal year. This is the wooden curbs over on the west side of Washington, north of Humboldt up to Weber, and we want to talk to the Finish Estates about cost sharing on a project here, so we would provide the funding, but they would do the design and the construction. And this would be, you know, replaced with concrete, and then also concrete sidewalks. This is the alignment of the concrete path that's going to go from, we were fortunate that Naffey Lodge came in and built the new sidewalks, that completed part of the project. They put in the crosswalk, and so we'll connect that crosswalk to the concrete path around the restrooms here in Yountville Community Park. So this is a fence along Washington Street on the left and the picnic benches on the right, and you can see the playground at the distance. This is a smaller striping machine, this is thermoplastic, and this is what they put up on Madison, and like I mentioned, we're, we're out to bid. We'll do some of the work that we can, but I think it's just, the bid was $46,000, so it's a little bit bigger than we can handle here in the house. In terms of future projects, we have a traffic calming program, there's a list of projects. For example, out here in front of Town Hall at Humboldt, we have the streetlight replacement program, and what we've looked at is, we've recently retrofitted many streetlights, 111 streetlights in town with a new LED. So what we want to do is get our money out of that, which will take up to eight years, and then we move forward with replacing the streetlights in the future, and we've done that. Jacob went through and looked at each neighborhood, how old were they, which would we do first, how much would it cost? And so in the CIP, the project description, you'll see a list of when each neighborhood would be completed. Traffic circulation plan, ADA accessibility update, this is mostly replacing curb ramps that are not in current compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act or Title 24 in California. Bridge barrier rail replacement projects, these are on Hopper Creek at Washington, Jefferson, and Yount. They do not meet current Caltrans or federal high administration requirements, so there is a risk that a truck could drive through the barrier rail into the creek and cause injuries and damage. In terms of unfunded future projects, survey monument program, this would be looking at all our survey control in town, these are usually intersections, and getting those all tied in together because the surveyors use, use those for projects. Sidewalk on South Washington, this is on the east side of Washington Street, south of Champagne by the Catholic Church, it's just, no, it's just a piece of sidewalk that was never built, could possibly get built as part of a development project, so that's why it's in the unfunded category. And then regrade and repave Weber, west of Washington, this is a, you know, I'll show you a picture of the puddle that forms there each time it rains hard. Let's see, what, I thought I had pictures. Water distribution, we're looking at the water meter transmitter replacement program. We had gone through and replaced about half the water meters in town, we're to look at the area east of the river, you know, outside, our outside town customers, and looking, what's called a bench test, so we're to look at how bad are those meters and do they need to be replaced at this time, and so we'll, we'll look at doing that in the future. Pressure regulator station, California Department of Public Health has asked us to look at essentially injecting chlorine into the water as it comes from the Veterans Home Transmission Line into the distribution system. So if we have low chlorine levels in our distribution system, then we can have a process of injecting chlorine disinfectant into the water to bring it to the regulated required levels. Our hydrant flushing program, this has been around a couple times. What we want to do here is work with the Veterans Home, and they still have sand in their transmission line. Instead of cleaning our distribution system and then having more sand come in from the transmission line, we want to clean the distribu, or the transmission, upgrade our pressure regulator pits with sand traps, and then we can clean our distribution system. So we want to have the clean water chase the dirty water out of the system. Fund 60 is our water utility enterprise fund. This is one of the town's typical water meters for residential home, and so they just remove the pipes at the two ends and we'll put this back in and put a remote reading sensor on top of it, so we can drive around town with a computer and pick up the readings each, every two months. This is a picture, the regulator station out on Yountville Crossroad near Fennel, this is where the water comes from the Veterans Home, 18-inch transmission line into the town's usually eight-inch pipelines. This is the crew out flushing sand, you can see the brown area here in the front. This is all sand coming out of the pipes, and this is the guys, this is Jefferson and this is Madison. So they'll, you know, we're using quite a bit of water just to clean the sand out of the system. Water distribution, project in the future, locked enclosures for California Public Health, we have to take water samples three times a week, and so what we want to do is have a, a box around the sampling point to keep as much dirt and contamination out there as possible so we get true readings. Fire flow study project, we're looking at in the future, this is mostly development related, how much water do they have to put in their sprinkler systems, which is, you know, Bouchon or the Chichio or R&amp;D Kitchen, all these contractors want to know, well, how much, what's the fire flow in town? So we've been requiring each developer to do their own tests at the closest fire hydrant, but we want to collect all that together. Groundwater management plan, we do have emergency well, and we're supposed to be doing update every so often to update that management plan. And a fixed network tough book, this is essentially an upgrade from our current system of driving around and reading the meters remotely. What this would do is have an antenna that would collect the information from the water meters, and then people could look at their own usage online and report like every hour. So you could look at your usage at 2:00 in the morning, see if you have a leak, you could see, you know, how much you use when you irrigate and things like that, so it would also be easier for us to do our billings. So a couple of options there. Water, wastewater reclamation, this is Fund 63, so this is the joint treatment plant part, not the collection system, and the costs are split with the Veterans Home, but we have equipment replacement program. We have the pump station equipment replacement program, that's at the southeast corner of town, that was built in 1977, so we want to start replacing some of that equipment. The methane capture project is, we're currently waiting for the equipment to arrive, it's supposed to be here in November, we were told May, so it's a little frustrating, but we want to pass money in the budget for that when they can get their equipment here. Wastewater and water reclamation 64, this is the collection system, so we're looking at inflow and infiltration reduction program. This is where we take cameras and look in the sewer pipes, find out where the problems are, can we do a slip line project, or do we need to do a, a full replacement where we cut, you know, excavate and replace the pipe and then backfill, which is what we do with the main and lateral replacement program, such as on Mulberry or Madison before we do the overlay. And then the recycled water project, this is the, the big ticket item, which is, we'll talk about more later about our environmental document, and we look at financing with this project. So this is the equipment at the treatment plant, lots of motors, lots of pumps, so we'll, we have that all inventoried, and so we're looking at the replacement schedule and cost for those. This is the equipment at the pump station, again, 1977, getting old, we need to, you know, keep it, make a list and start replacing those as those needed before they just fail and cause a violation with the regional board. This is the top of the digester with the methane, where it's currently venting to the atmosphere as a greenhouse gas, so we want to capture that, put it in pipes, and then use it in the heaters, because these, the digesters kept at about 93 degrees, so we use a lot of natural gas from PGE, and so this would reduce that, and they gave us the 20,000 grant to move forward with the project. So now it's just a matter of time of getting the equipment. This is the inside of a pipe after it's been slip lined, it's a, you know, essentially a plastic liner they put inside the pipes to keep out the roots and water, groundwater from infiltrating. This pipe being replaced, simple, you know, excavation, backfill and pave. It's kind of hard to see, but our recycled water project, we'll have more pictures of that. Existing system goes across the valley under the river to Silverado Trail into our existing recycled water customers, so we're looking, expanding that onto the west side of the river to new customers with, with storage ponds. Wastewater reclamation projects for the future, beyond this fiscal year, a new digester system, we'll look at studying that, how bad is it, you know, when do we need to replace it, what needs to be done, is it a, you know, full replacement, can we just do a lining or something like that? Let's look at different options there. SCADA system is, essentially we're, we're putting together a SCADA system, which is to remotely monitor our pumps and motors when we discharge to the, storage ponds at the recycled water customers. So once we put the system in place, we could also add on the flood wall, the emergency well, the water system, so we're looking at a phase two where we could add more systems to that. And then dredge in the wastewater ponds, you know, every year they fill up a little more sediment and silt and then we lose capacity, so we're looking at, you know, eventually dredging those out to remove some of the, create more storage volume. Capital projects fund, Fund 50 is our general fund, it's mostly made up of civic facilities, community projects, parks, and some streets projects. Current expenses for the five years is 1.17 million, I'm sorry, this is one year we'll talk about for this one. The current balance is 1.9 million, so we're in the, we have a positive balance, but we also, we're talking about doing the structural strengthening project at 3.2 million. We have 2.2 million of payment management need, that's our streets, slurry seals and overlays. There's $8 million for utility undergrounding project, and there's other unfunded projects when you look at the, the summary sheets for each category. And this does not include a transfer of 650,000 per year, which is core of the past trend with the council, transferring from the general fund to the capital projects fund. So this is a one-year snapshot, and the other ones we'll, I'll talk about as more of a five-year picture, because this one's, you know, if we look at financing for the structural strengthening, that would, you know, change some of this as well, so it's a little harder to project on this one. In terms of drainage and flood control, we're looking at about 1.7 million projects identified in the five-year capital improvement program. The funding through 2018 for Measure A is about 2.1, we estimate, but that varies based on how much sales tax revenue is brought in. So we're looking at a balance of 392,000, but we're also looking at possibly doing the Mulberry diversion, which would be 294, so once we get more design information, we'll look at, you know, adding that project in there. Fund 20 is our gas tax. Currently, we're looking at $2 million worth of work that needs to be done, but only having 552,000, which has a 1.5 million deficit, which doesn't even cover all the payment management costs and other, other unfunded projects. And this is where the, you know, I'll bring it up, the, there's talk about a half cent sales tax for transportation in November, and that's where this funding would go, is into the Fund 20, if that is approved by the voters by two-thirds, I believe. Estimated revenue is about $90,000 per year from our gas tax, and then there is currently a balance of 192,000. The water fund, we're looking at expenses of 700,000. Right now, we're looking at current revenue of about $40,000 per year, and a 118,000 balance, that's 278,000 over five years, so we're looking at a deficit in that fund, even though there is a replacement fee that's being collected on the utility bills. And that doesn't include the 1.2 million worth of pipeline replacements that we've identified as, would be proactive to move forward with those. Wastewater fund for treatment, we're looking okay. We have identifying expenses in the capital program of 302,000 over the next five years, funding about 400,000, which includes funding from the Veterans Home with a balance of about 97,000. The collection side does not look as good because this is 100% paid for by the rate payers. There is a replacement fee, but it's, you know, we have 3.3 in need, 2.3 roughly in, available funding, and then a deficit of a million dollars. So this gets into the years two through five and unfunded, of, you know, how do we proceed with this type of deficit? Because we are currently in a deficit of 631,000 from the Title 22 project, the upgrade at the treatment plant. Again, we're looking at $90,000 per year in the replacement fee funds, and then when you look at the recycled water project, we're looking at 2.6 million of state financing, and then the grants from the state and the federal government for planning and construction. So we're trying to put all this together into this, these balances. So there's been, in conclusion, more information and coordination of the capital improvement program over what was prepared and shown to you in the past fiscal years. We do show deficits in the streets, water and wastewater funds, and most of these projects are maintenance, we're not building new streets, they're not in compliance with our general plan, or new projects that would induce growth, so I recommend in the town council, you know, say that this is consistent with the general plan. So recommendations tonight, take any public comments, review and discuss the proposed five-year capital improvement program, find the town's five-year capital improvement program consistent with the general plan. With that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council about the staff report? Any, any questions? Councilmember Hall?
Um, yeah, a simple one, I think, or I hope. So Graham, and then this is all exhaustive detail information, can you tell me or share with me where in the CIP book or in the staff report there is a list by CF, or I'll maybe explicit, civic facilities, community projects, drainage and flood control, where it's broken out, I don't want the detail of every project, but the subtotal of each of those that rolls up and gives us the total number budgeted, which we can then say is consistent with the general plan? Because I can go back through each one and I can tie it back to the schedule, but is there a schedule in the package that shares that with me? And I, and I'm sorry if I'm being obtuse.
What we've done is we've broken down in the back, in the staff report and in the capital program, there's a summary for each category, so there's a civic facility summary.
And is there a single page that takes the summary of each category and lays it out so I can start to peel the onion?
Yeah, and the front of the, the first page of the staff report has the breakdown by funding source, so that's probably the best, you know, because most funding sources are associated with the categories.
Okay, so, so what you're saying, just to make sure I'm clear, the bullets on the first page of the staff report, those are, that's, those are the, if I add all those up, that is the current budgeted project total for cap, for CIP for this year?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just, because I, I was starting to tick and tie back and forth and my eyes started crossing, and I'm, I'm fairly good at this stuff, but I'll, I'll start with that as my first question. The second one is, just out of curiosity, I know on one of the slides you had indicated that the replace the tennis courts item is still in as an unfunded project, but wouldn't we, because we just effectively did the work, shouldn't we just remove it? I mean, is that?
Can. I mean, these are all being presented to you as options, I mean, you have the, if you'd like us to remove it from the CIP, we can do that.
Well, I guess my question for you is...
Let me, yeah, on that point, the replacement project does not go away because you did not, you did an interim treatment that's going to get you seven to 10 years, so when we talk about building that master list, at some point, now, it could very well be that that's 15 years out that we would need to look at it so we can, we can realign where it goes, but in terms of when we put that whole inventory in, you know, Graham talked to you about how really in the last two years, a lot of our energy has been capturing information to know, okay, you know, we have a tennis court, what's its life cycle, when, when should we expect that it might need work, when's a vehicle need to be replaced, when's a pump motor? So a lot of data, a lot of energy is really being put to collect, identify footnote. So when you say take it out, I'm going to tell you no, but what I'm going to tell you is it needs to be in year 2024, 2030, something like that would be where you would project it, if that makes any sense for you on the replacement of a tennis court.
I think I understand.
And if I can, I think there's a difference you're talking about between replacement and resurfacing.
Correct.
Right.
And then what we've just, tonight approved is the resurfacing, the replacement's still there, so those are, there's a distinction.
And so we're holding, just for, so I understand the question, I mean, so maybe I could present the question as, as it is to staff. You're, you're suggesting that we leave it in because, and I'm looking at you, but I'm talking to Steve, you believe that at some point in time we will replace the tennis courts, and it's an unfunded item, but we need to keep it there rather than considering that we might just resurface them again? Because I mean, because what you're, what you're suggesting, Steve, now I'm talking to you and really talking, looking at you and talking to him, is that we would consider an unfunded project of replacing something like the tennis courts versus resurfacing them again, which we all decided to do the first time.
We will go through both and evaluate, and that's like we brought the elements to you this year, and we will often endorse what we think is going to improve the life cycle, but it may reach a point in time when it needs to be reconstructed, just like streets do.
Okay.
So what we're really trying to say is cataloging it, and for example, we believe that the resurfacing will get us seven to 10 years, so you will probably see a resurfacing project plugged in, hoping to avoid or delay that longer-term replacement. But again, when you look at the range of options and, you know, we need to keep that aware, and in some cases, you know, this is one of those few times where the council has two different things that can do to keep something serviceable, you know, and many times on our own homes, there's a project, there's the okay minimum project, and there's the I really want to replace it project, and that's kind of what we're talking about here.
And that's reasonable. My only concern, expressly for the public who might be picking up this document and going through the myriad of items that we identify as potential replacement, improvement, maintenance projects, capital projects that we would consider, there are a litany of those that are considered unfunded. And if I'm at home and I don't know enough about or understand enough about how Yountville takes on all these critical projects and prioritizes them, I might say, well, holy cow, there's all these unfunded projects. What are you guys doing to ensure that they're going to get funded? Whereas we are sitting here today and we can have a dialogue about it. And we know, as you just indicated, that 15 years from now, that may be the issue. But I'm just, I mean, I'm putting it out there as a question. Is this the way we want to, if it's a catalog of items, that's fantastic. But what we're trying to do is get a rational set of what's in the, in the pipeline today.
And actually, that's actually a very good description. If you go back into some of the narrative, the CIP is both a planning document, which is that inventory, that list, that comprehensive look. And, you know, so you're right. In many cases, it is this catalog of over 15, 20-plus years. Then we try to rain, narrow it down. So you have a five-year focus that says, here's what's in that pipeline that's getting a little closer. That's year five, we call it out. So, and then year one is actually what we fund. So just because something's in our budget for, say, year 2018 is projected right now, that's a projected funding.
Fair enough.
So I'm going to follow up on Councilmember Hall so we can try to tie this together quickly. This is 2012 through 2017. Why are we worrying about 2018, 2020, 2040 in this particular document? And I believe that's your question.
That's the essence of my question.
It is. And what I'm trying to do is...
So can't we have a planning document that's from 2017, 18 beyond that isn't part of this document?
Yes. And I think what I was trying to say is it's not going off that list. So it falls into that catalog.
Understood. It's a different list.
And it doesn't, correct.
I think to Councilmember Hall's point, it can be confusing if we give the public the entire list. And, and it can be misinterpreted that it says unfunded on some projects. And we all know that that means they're not going to happen until there's funding. But that doesn't necessarily mean everyone in the public understands it. They might see it as where are they going to take the funding to pay for this? Not the same thing.
You actually, I hear you. And that's why I think we do want to focus on the five-year. But in some cases, when you look at your utility enterprise funds, when I say it's unfunded, it may truly be unfunded. And therefore, we are going to have to look at some point in time as to how are we potentially going to pay for that? So...
The, some point in time is what I think we're talking about here, is remove the, the uncertain distant future from the five-year, or else we would call this a 20-year plan.
Right.
This is a five-year plan.
I'm, I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I mean, I just, I think that, you know, we need to be very transparent and clear, which we're trying to be. But, you know, we're talking about a five-year plan. And I don't, I'm not disputing that we want to catalog what we have. But I want to make sure that we understand and we're communicating with our...
I think you guys have a good grasp of that. And that's exactly what we're doing, is that longer range planning is necessary in order for us to have an appropriate five-year plan.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
So I was going to, just to, I guess to back this up, is the, this one seems to be an odd outlier that it's still in what I consider a five-year plan. And whether you're going to have to replace the carpet every seven years, or we have a pool pump that after four years apparently needs to be replaced after we spent 1.1 million dollars however many years ago, that seems to be a separate entity. And I've always complained about the fact that we've got utility undergrounding in there for an unfunded $8 million, because I tell people, they're like, when are we going to do that? Because it's in the CIP. My answer is, we're not going to do that. We don't have $8 million to do that. So it creates an expectation that I think is unrealistic. And the flip side is if we just spent 70 or 80,000 on the tennis courts, and we're saying that it's not good enough for the, makes it sound like it's not good enough for the next five years.
What would you write the check for?
Yeah. So I think that one seems to be just a dangling outlier that needs to come up.
Yeah. We do have a section, not to cause confusion, called new and future potential projects. And there's been things like a gazebo, you know, field community park. And so these are things that have been brought up in the past, and we just sort of put it in there as a possibility. It's been looked at. We really don't want to move forward with it. Parks and Rec Commission doesn't recommend it. But people know that we've taken a look at it, and we can put it there also to say that maybe in 15 years, we look at replacing the tennis courts. I think the tennis court replacement project had come as an option of, well, the floods, do we want to build a flood wall around it? Do we want to do it differently so it's flood-proof? So I think that was sort of where that replacement project had been described and how they looked at the cost estimates.
And my, my only question ultimately is, you know, it's not time-bound. Is it something that we need to include? And I understand town manager's direction and the cataloging of those items, but it's also setting an expectation and/or the realization of what we just did. And I, I'm just, I want to be clear with that. And I...
I think from what you guys are discussing, we can clearly take it out of the five-year horizon, and it gets parked into that long-range catalog. That's, that's more than appropriate. And I definitely think we can do that.
Well, because it's, it's no different than we can add in a project any year.
Right.
That's not on this master list. So the need for the master list, if you want to pick on the gazebo concept for a moment, take it out. Any year we have funding or enough residential interest and council interest to put it in, we put it back in. But to have it there every year, there are other things that we have eliminated, a dog park being one of them.
We have got to share with you, no, you don't want to do that necessarily.
Steve, I think we're talking about two different things. We're not saying eliminate it from your planning document, where you have these lists of things that we want to do, wish list, no, no money available. But when we're talking about creating this particular document, that we have to explain why everything's in there, it gets confusing.
It may, but I'm going to have to explain to you also, you really do want to have some of your unfunded projects that are identified and thought out. Because when, when we seek funding and look at either grants or state partnerships and state funding, they look to see that your project has been evaluated and included in your CIP. So we're really in a catch-22, where if we're not showing that the organization has the detailed planning and they know where they're in the queue. So what we're really saying is something's in the queue, it's going nowhere until we find the funding. And that's what we struggle with, because I hear exactly what you're talking about. Well, you know, what are we doing? Why don't you have the funding? We don't have the funding, you know? In some cases, for example, I review all of the Park and Rec Grant Program applications to see what the priorities are. There may be something that we've identified as a low priority in our CIP that meets the funding criteria. And then if we can go get that grant, then we potentially move that project forward. Case in point, some of the transportation, that's, that's how we ended up with the Yountville Mile. So that's part of the challenge to staff when you're looking at the CIP, is both that forward thinking, that cataloging, as well as what's in the current year. And that's where I do think that is, you're absolutely correct. It's not, it's challenging because, you know, year four and five are things that we're starting to look at. One of the areas that we're, we're making progress at that we haven't fully got to where we want to be is being able to tell you, here's what your funding capacity is for all five years. For example, Graham's tried to walk you through with what we're doing. But for example, in our water and wastewater, you know, we're not there yet. We're implementing a new rate structure. Where is it going to go? You know, we don't know where we're at with the recycled water project, because if the minimum project comes in, then we can apply some of our fund balance to other projects and that. So it is a little bit of a struggle that we, we want a good list, and we also want enough project detail that we can move it forward. Because if a grant came forward or a funder came forward, we want to say, hey, you know, we, we can pull, one of you mentioned, and I apologize, you talked about, these are things in the queue. They're the planning. You pull it off the shelf and we're ready to expand it and go if something materializes. So it is that conundrum of project lists, wish lists, as well as what's really funded.
Okay.
The other thing, I'd like to, oh, before we, sorry, if I add one more, two cents. The other thing we're trying to do is identify those future costs in the water and wastewater so that we can give you adequate information for setting rates for the next rate schedule, rate study. So the first thing the consultant does when they do a rate study is say, okay, what's in your capital improvement program? So what we want to do is want to identify, what are those needs that we should include in our rate structure for the next five years or maybe sometimes longer? So we want to have, give you the information to make an informed decision on what, how much money do we need? And do we justify a rate increase? And by how much? And stuff like that.
Well, that's specifically my question. From what I saw up here and what our proposed rate structure is, we've now identified capital improvement projects within that utility fund that we really don't have, you know, the rate structure is really not going to take care of within that five years.
Correct.
I don't think we can wait five more years from, am I correct in what I kind of saw? I mean, a lot of things have come up. We've got the water board that's like, you know, yes, you can do this. And then you send it to them, and they say no. So, you know, a lot of surprises, I guess, is really what's come up. So, and I think we're going to have to deal with that sooner rather than later, it looks like to me.
A lot of it has to do with prioritization. So sure, there's lots of stuff we should be doing. It'll cost less money if we do it now. But we don't have the money, so we have to defer it. So that's sort of what we're trying to do with the capital improvement program is, okay, what, what do we need to do? What's mandatory because it's a permit requirement? Or what can we defer for a little bit longer and hopefully we can limp by? And it'll cost us more later, but, you know, we'll, we just don't have the money.
So right now, I'm not, so we do have enough money with our proposed rate structure increases that should cover the mandatory or likely to be mandatory items. So we're okay.
As long as we get financing on this recycled water project.
Of tuna tuna.
We can't pay as you go for a 1.2 to 3.4 million dollar project.
We're talking 1.2 million or the 2.6 million? What's...
Both. Yeah. Either, both of those need financing.
And we don't know which plan is going to be approved by the regulatory agency. So we're, we're trying to steer the end result to the lower cost one, as you know.
Right.
But, you know, and we have...
We have to do that within five years. So it's very likely that we are, our rate increase will not take care of the five, next five years.
It's questionable, because we have built-in debt financing capacity of about 2.5 million. So we're on the cusp. But you're also correct that if a couple of these other, like sewer lateral replacements are something that you want to do. For example, what I'm really struggling with and pulling my hair out right now is how to find money to do Madison. But to do Madison for you also means the water and wastewater funds, which don't have money, extra money right now. Because Graham mentioned the fact that, you know, we don't want to pave a road and then come back and tear it up and put the underlying utilities. So I'm looking at how do I find a combination of 500,000 to 600,000 from a general fund, streets component, a water fund component, and a wastewater fund, which are both concurrent deficits, working out of those deficits while building up a reserve. And then if I have to, so I mean, those are just some of our challenges, and we're, we're trying to do a better job. This is why, one of the things that we really want to try to do with our CIP is educate the council and the community on the future years, and then be fine-tuning those future years. Year two and three, we need to be talking more to you about, okay, like we know what you're saying. We need to be able to say, this project is really, really important. It's a regulatory compliant, and we've got, and we, we think it's going to be 200,000, and we have 150 in the bank. That's where we're, that's where staff really wants to get this document to for you. And that's our refinement, and it meets those commitments. But that's, that's how we approach those.
I want to get back to see if we have any other questions specifically about his presentation. Okay. I was going to, eventually I was going to actually turn this way. Councilmember Dornbecker, you ready to go?
I am. On page two of three of the staff report, you have the large projects approved by the town council on June 19th, 2012 for this year include 10 items. Are the, do we have the money to pay for those 10 items?
Yes.
Oh, no.
No. No, there's two exceptions. What's the, no, no, that's, you've approved the projects in the concept. The two items that require debt financing are the recycled water project and the town hall structural strengthening project. Without those two securing debt financing, those two projects will not move forward. The other projects are all funded and ready to go.
Well, let me also add my two cents on that. So we have the finance built into the rates for the recycled water project. So we just sent an application to the state, say, for a state revolving fund loan to say, based on the rates that were passed, that we have the, a capacity to fund that project. Now, the seismic retrofit is, the assumption is that we've been getting enough general fund revenue from the TOT to have enough debt capacity to pay half of the 600,000 the town council's been putting into the capital projects fund. Half of that could be put aside for financing the seismic retrofit. So at this point, it appears that we have the, the funding to get the loans to pay for these projects.
Can I just have one follow-up?
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Rolla?
So we do have the money built into the wastewater rates to take care of the, the water lines out to...
The recycled water.
The recycled water lines, if we're at the, at the low minimum of the 1.2 project. We're okay.
I think Kathleen can check, if it was 2.4 was the...
2.4.
So we have up to 2.4. So they're, really the only one is the, the town hall to, to directly answer Councilmember Dornbecker.
But based on the, the amount of revenue that's been coming in to the general fund and the amount of the transfers the council's been making into the capital project funds, it was calculated that half that could be spent, 300,000 could be spent for debt financing for the seismic retrofit.
Yeah. But then we won't be doing something else. So that's what we need to always remember.
Right. This choice we brought before you, but I just want to tell you what our assumptions have been and what we've been looking at.
Okay.
And to where Graham's working on, that was also, that direction's been based on your priority and your policy direction. So my caveat when I say that is those two loans, debt service instruments have not been approved by the council. So to me, the money's not in the books in the banks to therefore start it. But from the projections, I will tell you that we have the funding capacity to move forward with those.
Right.
Okay. I'm going to invite the public to speak and invite Jacob, if you would like to share any about your experience in helping out Graham and putting this together, now would be your chance.
There's a lot of fun and a lot of work.
Did you hear that, Graham?
Yes.
He did say fun first.
That was, that's good.
If that means anything at all.
I coached him.
Yeah. Thank you very much for helping out, putting this whole thing together. And we'll need you again next year and for apparently the next 20 to 30 years. And we don't have any funding for you.
Yeah, I think we can support it.
It's a, it's a sweet deal.
Nice.
Well, with no other members of the public wanting to comment, I'll bring the discussion and potential action back to the council.
Mayor and council, before you begin your deliberations, I do have one thing staff would like to recommend to you as an evolution of our process. Sam mentioned it earlier, we're talking to be flexible. We had some internal discussions in the course of our budget development and staff resource impacts. And beginning next year, we'd like to slightly tweak our presentation process to better use staff resources. Right now, the core budget work and the capital improvement are done almost on a parallel base. And our staff is overtaxed on both of those document processes. One of the thought processes that we're looking at is, you'll see Graham back in January, and we will adopt the new CIP in the January, February timeline, where then that one year, that year number one, gets slid right in to the budget for the current. Because right now, you know, we just, we have very lean staff resources and the same people. So I just want to share with you, we're always looking at, is there a better way for us to do this, maximize it? Plus, that sort of gets you in front of the curve rather than behind the curve. So I just want you to know that that will be coming forward. So you will see the 20, you'll see a very similar version of this presented in January, but allowing us to make that planning tweak so that then we can be putting, you know, instead of adopting our current year...
We're seeing five nodding heads, so that sounds like a good plan.
Can we put a PowerPoint page maximum in our resolution?
How was my time?
Well, then you get into the font size. I think you achieved...
Oh, font size. Yeah, there you go.
We could do that, too.
So that totally makes sense. I mean, you can get a two-for-one out of the deal. Absolutely. So additional comments? Any, I know we've, it's been a very extensive evaluation and discussion and presentation. So, Councilmember Hall?
First of all...
Your calculator's not on, is it?
No, it's off. I turned it off. First of all, I, I agree with that. I mean, in my experience in doing planning and budgeting, your, your CIP or your fixed asset module always goes first. It allows you to drive your operating budget. So that's a smart move. And I recommend that you make that process, because you don't want to be doing them both concurrently. That being said... them both concurrently. That being said, Graham, it's, it's a lot of information. It's exhaustive, and that's a positive statement, meaning that clearly the work is being done to evaluate what we need to do. And what I think is important is that these are all the things that everyone in this community benefits from, but it's a thankless effort that you have to put forth to not only pull it together, but to then present it. So, I appreciate the effort that goes behind it, and I, and I know that you and your team do a good job of that. So, I mean, it's a lot of information. It's dense. My only comment is that if we can summarize information in a manner that we can quickly start to peel the onion, it will make you cry. But, the reality is, for someone like me, and probably for others in the community, it would be easier to digest and piece through and be able to really see how these numbers are being built and formulated through each of the different types of project activities. So, that, that's my only comment.
Councilmember Moller, any additional comments?
No, I, infrastructure's always kind of, you know, number one to me. And, and I think that sometimes we're sitting around quibbling over $3,000 here or 5,000 there. And, when I do that, I'm always thinking about the infrastructure that we need to do and trying to put all that money into here, because they see these big numbers, and it's, you know, it's not sexy, but it's critical to the town. So, good job.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, I think that sums it up. It's not sexy, but it's critical. No, I, you know, it's, it's daunting, but it's really great that you're doing this cataloging, and so that you know exactly what's coming down the line. So, and I think doing, doing it prior to our budget negotiations, you know, in the beginning of the year will help us streamline the process.
Thanks. Vice Mayor.
If you think it's sexy, it's okay.
I don't think it's sexy. But, I also know it's a bad thing if the water lines are leaking and breaking.
Right.
My only comment is, everything that, that Councilmember Hall said about the process and the effort, I completely agree with.
Thank you.
And I'll just add, one of the keys that you've heard this council talk about is being able to identify the funding sources. And I think that's what we were talking about earlier in this discussion, is, I don't think it's an issue of transparency. It may be an issue of clarity for the general public, especially understanding specifically what is on the list and what isn't on the list. How we could do that, maybe tweak it for next year and years to follow. Again, and I totally understand, and the town manager makes a very good point, you need to show in some cases that we're shovel-ready. And, to take away that flexibility wouldn't make sense in some cases. But, in other cases, again, to pick on the gazebo, it's just, that's an example. It could be so easily added back in that it's just out there dangling. People are, the pro-gazebo folks are saying, why isn't it getting done this year? It's in your list.
Yeah.
So, you know, there are just some of those, I think, kind of cloud that clarity a little bit. So, if we can, we can streamline it just a bit in the future years. But, I really stress the value of having that funding source identified, and if it's not there, the projected funding sources as the years are coming. So, that's really critical for that long-term planning. So, with that feedback, is there a motion for action?
I move that we approve Resolution Number 3050-12, approving the town's five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 2012, 2013 through 2016, 2017, and finding it consistent with the general plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Graham.
You have an extra hyphen in the title of that, by the way. Fiscal years, fiscal years 2012, 2013. You have a hyphen in there. It's part of the resolution. We approved it with the additional hyphen.
I'll add clarifying language in a resolution that will have a standard one that allows for correction of typographical error.
Graham, we're here. Moving on to 10D, sign ordinance amendment workshop. Okay.
Sandra's not here. Thank you. This is a continued, continuation of earlier workshops that have been held on some staff-initiated amendments and clarifications to the sign ordinance. We had ZDRB comment on, on this at May and July workshops, and town council held a workshop in June on the same topics. Have two, two old or formerly reviewed topics to, that I'll move through quickly, and two new areas that we would like to get some comment on. The two older ones have to do with the portable signs and the sign area and copy on a sign. The general consensus through the workshops on the portable freestanding signs is that they, to continue provision on portable freestanding signs, and these are the A-frames, specifically those are called out as, to be prohibited. Without, with some exceptions, that would include on the, in this category, menu signs, nonprofit special event signs, community center signs, and real estate open house signs. Menu signs would require specific location, which must be within five feet of the business entry, not blocking it right away, and removal at the end of the business day. Open signs, the, this is a new direction we're taking this. These are the portable on a stick kind of open signs you see some businesses utilizing. Those would now be prohibited, and they would need to be moved to the exterior wall or the window at the business. We would add two new definitions that would define freestanding portable sign and monument sign. Real estate open house signs, the cleanup there would be to specify that you get one generic sign at an intersection on the single most direct route to the property from Yount or Washington Street. This is an ambiguity that somebody wanted to have one at, like, every intersection. And, well, okay, it doesn't say that, but it doesn't mean that either. And, so, we want to, we want to make that clear. And then it would specify some penalties that include $500 penalty per occurrence, and allows for the immediate confiscation of portable sign, and then we would be repeating, or reporting repeat violators of the council. Following any action that would incorporate these changes, we would launch an enforcement education with the businesses, and this would include a press release and a timeframe for the removal and discontinuance of these, use of these portable freestanding signs. Second area that's been covered before is sign area, and also copy on the signs. The changes here would be, we would be using rectilinear measurements around a, the letters of a sign on a sign that is on a large surface that is not specifically designed for, to contain the sign. Monument sign is a, its sole purpose is to contain the sign where a sign on a wall of a business, or another good example was the, the rammed earth walls at the entry to Bardessano were originally not intended to have signs on them, and they became readapted for that purpose. The original concept of the rammed earth at Bardessano was to announce, as an element, announce an entryway. And they're, they were going to be used more extensively throughout the project at every entrance to each cluster of units. There's, I think, five total clusters, and at each, they're going to have rammed earth at each entry to those clusters interior in the project. The, the, they only ended up using them at the entry off of Yount and at the Motor Court is where you find rammed earth there. At any rate, they adapted those to contain signs now, and then it became a question of, well, do you measure the whole thing, or do you, how do you differentiate how much is the sign area? And that, so, you go around and put rectangles around the copy, and that's what the sign area would be measured as. The other change here would be, all businesses are allowed to, of course, include their business identification name, but we would also add the ability to add a description of the general, what the business is engaged in. Principal goods or services that they sell are provided. Formerly, that was only allowed in a master sign plan for a project that had multiple businesses. Okay, so, those are incorporated into a draft ordinance that we're not, is not up for action tonight. We're just getting comments tonight. This is a workshop format. But, you would expect to see those come back in a proposed ordinance amendment subsequent meeting. The two new topics that we're interested in your comments are on R. Right now, we have menu signs that, and they're restricted to restaurants. We've, we've received requests from wine tasting rooms to have menu signs similar to the restaurants. And, this is a, that, right now, by definition, they're restricted from, from having them. We would point out that you would expect to see, if they're allowed, most likely, most wine tasting rooms displaying them if they're allowed. And, we're talking on up to, you know, the 15 that we have. Whether that's acceptable or not, that, that would be the anticipation, anticipated effect. There was a mixed reaction on this at the ZDRB when it was discussed. Some, some accepted them, others did not. The, there were three discussions by members in the staff report. The other item that we are interested in your, new item that we're interested in your feedback on is what's called advertising statuary. We have a ordinance section now that allows what's called advertising statuary, which is a statue or other three-dimensional structure in the form of an object that identifies, advertises, or otherwise directs attention to a service, product, business, or activity. When it was originally drafted and approved, it was in response to a very specific set of circumstances that was going on at a business about six years ago. And, it got into the area of outdoor display of merchandise, and prohibiting the outdoor display of merchandise, generally, if they offer that for sale, you can't have it displayed outside. The, the issue that we are dealing with here is when it becomes part of the decor in a generic way. We're in Napa Valley, wine bottles, the great motif is, is, of course, expected to be seen here. And, we have wine tasting rooms that have asked to display wine bottles out, out front as part of a, as an ornament, or a display as part of the decor, as maybe considered an art object or a landscape element, however you wish to define it, on an ongoing basis. And, since they sell wine, it became a outdoor display of merchandise in a sense. And then, and then it gets into the fine points. What if they remove the labels, and it's just wine bottles? What if you fuse the wine bottles together, and there's four or five of them in this fused-together object? They're not selling those. So, it be, it becomes a fine line of where do we, when does it start becoming decor and stop becoming something they sell? And, how restricted do we want to be with this? That's, that's the feedback we would like to receive on that one. Again, that was-
Bob, if I could just interrupt real quickly, just to give a heads up to our town attorney on that particular item. I think I'm at least going to ask a legal definition of our ability to control that type of definition. And if we exclude one type of business or allow one type of business, does that mean we have to allow all types of business to do that? So, that's just, once we, I want to get through your presentation first, but just a heads up on that one.
I was just going to follow up that, again, at the ZDRB, when that was discussed, there was a mixed reaction, again, to that. It's not unanimous. And, that, that really concludes my staff report. If, and so, we're asking for council comment on, on those points. On the first two items that I mentioned, the portable signs and sign area and sign copy, we've already pretty much bundled what we've heard to this point and incorporated it into amendments to the ordinance. If you have, if there's any other thinking on that that's new, we would appreciate hearing that as well.
So, let me dare to try to guide this, and I don't mean to imply anybody's opinion on the council. But, if we all agree already on some of this, I'd rather not have 30 minutes of discussion to get to that point. So, is there a consensus that we should continue to prohibit all portable freestanding signs?
Yes.
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 That went fairly quickly, didn't it? Okay. Sign area, then. Specific, basically, you're asking, should it be defined by the actual lettering, text, graphic, whatever component of the sign, you know, within quotation marks there, as opposed to the structure that, that those elements are adhered to?
Yes. And, and the distinction there is, provided the structure was, is not specifically designed to contain the sign itself. For instance, when you come into town and Hotel Yountville Monument is there, that wouldn't be there unless it had a sign on it. It just wouldn't be a little wall there. It's, it's there to contain that sign. So, we count the entire surface area of that. The other example would be on a wall. Where do you stop? You don't count the whole wall, or you don't, the wall, rammed earth walls at Bardessano were not originally designed for signs. They, they became signs afterwards. So, then you would go in and do, use the little rectangles to define how much the count of the sign.
So, is it possible to, part, I think that we have to discuss this in a couple different ways. One, I would propose, is it acceptable if the signage is on an existing wall or structure that clearly is not just meant to support a sign? Does that make sense to everyone?
Yes.
If it's on the side of a building, or something substantially part of the business, I'm just trying to guess if there's something that wouldn't be the side of a building. Side of a building is acceptable for counting just the area of the graphic or lettering. Is that, does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
If it's on a freestanding element, that's where it starts to get a little dicey, because the example you just gave, Hotel Yountville, if you argued that Bardessano's wall versus monument wall versus Hotel Yountville's monument wall, because one called it a wall and changed it to a sign wall, but the first one called it a sign wall from the beginning, I don't know that it's fair that we treat them differently.
Napa Valley Lodge is another good example. That one.
You have the Napa Valley Lodge, and the wall versus the lettering on that.
I was going to bring that up. There's a, an example of, the structure serves another purpose, in that it's a retaining wall, and it's a screen wall as well. So, in that case, we would be boxing it out.
I think that, to me, the, the point is, is that this needs to be written. First of all, I, I think what you're talking about, in principle, I personally agree with, makes sense. The Bardessano one is a strange example, because I always saw that and go, where's the sign? Because it looks like a sign without a sign on it. But, given that, we're, we're talking about three different examples that already have nuances that are tough to define. I think that there needs to be broad enough discretion to be able to say, hey, you know what, this, the, the point of this is, is the sign. Because somebody's going to say, oh, well, that's just a wall in front of Hotel Yountville, and, and we're just going to extend it so we don't, so it gets counted down to small. So, I, I wouldn't over, over, if I can say it right, box yourself in on the terminology so it can be exploited in the wrong way, but to be able to use the spirit of what you're saying. And, our, our attorney loves the spirit of when we write ordinances, I'm sure.
And maybe some design graphics examples in this, I think, go a long way.
That could be.
To, you know, tell somebody, if you've got two poles going up and a sign in the middle, the rectilinear part talks about the sign between the poles, not the whole distance from the top of the poles to the bottom of the ground. So, I think you should be able to find a few examples out there that you can put in there that's going to add a lot of clarity.
And I do think that you found that second term that I didn't have, the structure or a structure that is acting principally for another purpose. So, if it's the building side, or if it's a structure that's not acting purely as a sign support, you know, the language it used was much more eloquent. But, to, for me, those two, like the Napa Valley Lodge example, I would- But to, for me, those two, like the Napa Valley Lodge example, I would never count that entire wall as a sign. There's logic, I think, that would tell you the sign is defined by the lettering. So I think the way you defined it just then, which was the, if it's on the side of a structure, count the, count the lettering and/or graphic only. If it's on a surface that is serving a different purpose principally, count the lettering or just the graphic, whatever. But then if it gets into something that's specifically to support the signage, poles, wall, flag, whatever it might be, then that entire area needs to be counted as signage.
And we may find that we have to grandfather something in, once you're able to kind of go through a few things. And I'm willing to talk about that. There might be some unique example out there. I'm not going to have Bardessano tear down a wall because it says Bardessano or something. I'd be willing to talk about grandfathering a few things in. But hereforward, this now applies.
Well, I think that concern would only be in the case if that property already was maxing their sign space, because some-
Right.
-are under their limit, and they, even if you did count, say Hotel Yountville, another as an example, if you counted that whole monument wall versus the lettering, they may still very well comply-
Right.
-with the, with the limit.
I'm just saying, I was driving around town, really aware after reading all this, and we might just find that situation.
Right.
So that, that leads me a little bit to legal. Can we retroactively apply something like this to somebody who has a, now that we're calling a monument freestanding wall?
Not retroactively.
I was just inviting our town attorney's opinion, but we've already got our town manager's opinion with his violent head shaking. Another example would be-
I'll put my last grip against his, but he is correct.
Up at the north end of town, at Washington Square, again, we're going to get into an issue of, it's called Washington Square on the monument wall. It doesn't define any particular business. Edward James Courtyard, same thing.
Correct.
How do we count those? And can we?
I'll throw you in there.
If they're, if they're already approved, but in the future, if we want to prohibit that from happening?
Let's attempt to address the first question about if it's already been approved, or if it's already exists, excuse me, prior to the implementation of new signing, sign ordinances, they are legal nonconforming. So if they, they come in for a modification or a change, then they would have to comport to the new regulations at that time. I hope that, and then-
That, that answers the first question. The other one was more, I guess, almost philosophical about the identifier of a property versus the identifier of the businesses in, in that property.
Well, I'll pretty much defer to Bob's interpretation, because I, mine, and Bob and I have not discussed this, but-
Well, I think part of the issue there, what you're talking about, is they've got so much square footage to use, and if they choose to use it for Washington Square, we've had conversations with several people saying, why?
Why, yeah.
But it's their choice. But if you choose to put Washington Square and a bunch of logos as opposed to the businesses that are there, that's their choice. We still end up with a maximum amount of signage that they can end up with.
And be aware that those signs, Washington Square, Edward James Courtyard, Hotel Yountville, when it was Yountville in, those were all counted as part of their sign allotment, the entire, because our understanding was clear at the time, those were the sign that's only there because they contain a sign. And we, we counted the border, out to the border.
Specifically, Washington Square, again, if we count that entire monument wall as signage, and now there are businesses that are part of that want individual signs, and just hypothetically, we're going to say we're going to allow those at each entrance to each business. But the size of those signs are now restricted based on the monument wall, so it does matter if we're counting that entire monument wall. Now, I realize that negotiation between the tenants and the landlord might be, don't use the dead space of the monument wall that's going to hurt our ability to independently sign. I understand that that is still out there.
When we have situations like Edward James, Washington Square, V Marketplace, Piazza Curcia, those all come under master sign programs that are approved, where they get a single identifier sign, and then they get a directory, and then each business gets an individual identification sign at their entry. So that's, they come under a little different set of rules that allow a master sign plan for that center. There are limitations on how big the, each one can be individually and aggregate altogether. And I also, one thing didn't mention, that we are clarifying that a sign that is, has copy on both sides is counted. Both surfaces are totaled up, you don't just get one for the-
I agree.
Okay. Any other specific comments about sign area?
No.
No? I think we're, so the two new issues, you want to talk about, one being display, let's see, which one did you have first?
Menu signs or advertising statuary.
Advertising statuary. Menu signs and an advertising statuary.
So menus for non-restaurant is what you're talking about. Now, we're talking specifically, and this gets to the point I was bringing up, we're hearing from tasting rooms that maybe they want to have menus out there if we allow it. Can we, if we agree, yes, that's okay, can we restrict the next type of business from wanting to put a list of their inventory on what they call a menu of product?
Well, you know, it's, the request is coming from tasting rooms, but you're right. Chocolate place, or any number of places that have offerings that change could have a similar request, and it may, you may get other requests to comprehensively allow menu signs for anyone that chooses to have one. Coffee shops.
Haircut styles.
Well, it could get to that.
Well, and that's what I was wondering, I mean, is it even legal to limit it to restaurants specifically?
Mr. Mayor, members of the town council, I would, I would believe that you can restrict and limit food service type of signs versus, like you said, haircut style, or clothes that may be available in a retail clothing operation. So, because you're also, you know, you're also going to regulate the size of those menu boards or menu signs, and to have what may be offered that day in the tasting room, similarly to what is being offered at, at some other restaurants, I don't see that as a problem. And I also don't see it as a problem to say that it's going to apply to certain, certain types of businesses versus others. But once you open it to food service, I think you're going to then, you know, then someone who offers wine is going to say, why can they put their, why can they put their wine list up on the menu board and not ours? So as long as there's not any discriminatory application of, of the ordinance, then I think the town will be fine.
So it would need to be available to any, potentially, any tasting room, if, if any single tasting room was permitted. Clearly, any tasting room would then be allowed, but not obviously required. So it'd be up to them as an option, just as it is that some restaurants choose to put them out and some don't. But the option is available to every one of them.
That is true.
Would have to be, in a category.
And generally, in these types of situations, it's time, place, and manner restrictions, and this is commercial speech. Putting up a, putting up a sign with your menu is commercial speech. And that allows for towns or cities to impose further regulations than non-commercial speech.
You just have to allow the entire category of, of business in or out.
Correct.
So how does the council feel about this item? Is it something that, supportive or opposed to?
I definitely think menu signs for full-service restaurants. I mean, these little strings of things all over the place. Tasting room, somebody's coming in, hand them an iPad. Here we go, that's what we got today, you know? So I support full-service men, full-service restaurants-
Only.
Only for a menu sign.
So restricting tasting rooms is the way it was-
You're a full-service restaurant, you can put your food up there. That's it. Just like anyplace else.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, because what, what's being asked is tasting rooms. So you're saying you would prohibit it for tasting rooms and allow it for full-service restaurants? And when you say full service, are you meaning brick and mortar? So are you trying to exclude mobile vendors?
Yes. Full-service rest, we have a definition for a full-service restaurant, so that's who I would allow.
Requires table service and et cetera, et cetera.
Right. That's who I would allow it for.
So I'm just going to follow up with a question then about mobile vendors. How do you restrict a, do you then restrict a menu sign that's attached to a mobile?
The one we have, when they came in-
Well, the one permanent one we have.
The one permanent one. When they came in, it was prototypical of those kinds of food trucks to display the menu. And so that's, as part of their use permit was approved as the package of the truck that was approved, displaying a menu. There's really no, since they have no other way to inform people other than talking to them, I guess it's the best way to do it, is to display the menu.
But that's why I'm bringing it up, because as we're hearing other council comments, we want to hear they're of a similar position of only full-service restaurants, or is it restaurants with some definition flexibility?
I think with that one exception, I guess I, what I'm getting at is that would be an exception to the full service.
Okay. Councilor Hall, do you have a comment on the menu issue?
Yes, I do. You know, I, I tend to believe that as it is, or as it relates to food and beverage delivery, and I'm not exactly sure whether full service, I wouldn't go as far as limiting it to the full service, because I certainly see the value that a tasting environment might have. Obviously, it would have to conform with the existing menu sign ordinance or rules or regulations that we currently have, that they should have the flexibility to include that. I mean, that might entice someone who is coming to a tasting room to say whether or not they want to taste there or not. And I certainly don't want to direct traffic away, because they don't have that option. That's not to say that, it's not meritorious for someone to step in to actually see what they have, but at the same time, you know, we do have a fairly, we have a walking public here, and we want to keep them moving along as well, because there's other places to see, and we want to spend their money somewhere in town. Maybe that would just encourage someone who was interested in the zenfendel of the day, assuming that existed, that they would, that they would go in. So I, I'm okay with it for, as it's been presented in the, in the staff report.
Tasting rooms, expanding to tasting rooms.
Yeah, well, I would expand it, and I, I don't know, you know, exactly the nature of how we would outline it. I don't believe that, you know, I should go find a place that's going to give me, you know, a high and tight versus a bozo, the clown haircut. I think that we should limit it to the type of business that would be food and beverage, things that rotated on a natural, sort of a natural evolution of what they provide. And that's how we scaled that, or how it was defined, I think that, you know, town staff certainly has definitions, because we went through the wine tasting room, and lounge, and bar, and tattoo parlor shops. We have plenty of definitions that we can ordinance this around. I don't want to over-regulate either, but I think that we could limit how we end up, how we end up presenting that, but I think it's an option we should consider.
Councilor Doran Becker on the menus?
I totally agree with Councilmember Hall. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor.
Well, I totally agree with Councilmember Hall and Councilmember Doran Becker. And I think I'm okay to say this, considering the nature of it, but as a member of the limited-service restaurant community, I would hate to see full-service restaurants and people on wheels be able to do it, but not the few of us who have limited service. So I wouldn't like that exemption to be cut out for others. So that's how I see it.
And I would, I would welcome food and beverage businesses being included in the ability to menu. I think it does, there is some kind of common sense aspect of that, to allow people to identify what the product is. Many other businesses have window displays and such that allow you to know what their product is. And in the case of tasting rooms, you can identify the name of the tasting room, but you can't necessarily identify what the product is. So I'd be willing, and we just have to be careful how we control that, because we see every time there's an opportunity to find a loophole and abuse it, somebody finds a way to do it. And I know we're about to get on to the next element with the 3D signage, and what is a display and what is merchandise, so let's just move right into that one.
So before we leave this, if I understand correctly, we, the comments were towards tasting rooms essentially to the exclusion of other types of businesses that-
Yes. Expanding the menu capability to tasting rooms and not restricting it to full service, I didn't get the sense that there was consensus on that. But to limit it to food and beverage, or, you know, restaurants and tasting rooms.
Thank you.
So then, on to merchandise display, and what is a sign and what is merchandise?
I'm willing to start out on this one, too. Kind of, my opinion is that we should add a new section called outdoor display to the ordinance that we have. What I would suggest is that we allow every business to have two items in their outdoor display. For example, like in front of Bistro Giante, they have a bicycle and flowers, they can have something else. If it's an art store, they could have an easel and a painting. If it's a wine shop or tasting room, they could have a wine bottle, I guess they could anneal them together, I don't care, and a barrel. So two items. Like in Overland, they could have a jacket on a stand. So I think that way it really limits it from getting out of control. I would allow these to be on a raised porch or a patio. I think a raised porch is pretty easy to figure out what that is. A patio, I'll let the staff figure out what's a patio. I think the items need to come indoors when the business is closed, they're not permanent outside. I would say no business name or ID, because that gets it a lot more complicated and adds an item. Non-motorized. I would also figure out some limitations on the height, you know, maybe six feet, ten feet. Sorry, Lewis, you can't have a big giant blow-up avocado on your roof or something like that, but-
Six feet's fine.
Okay. And I think we also need to put something in, if we have multiple tenants in a building, some restriction. We don't want these things every four or five feet, you know, and I'm not very good at frontal feet. Maybe if it's a multiple tenant building, every fifty feet or a hundred, somehow limit it if there's a lot of, we just don't want a lot of clutter, if there's a lot of multiple tenant buildings. And I think these things need a permit. I think they need to come to you, and, you know, as a general view, it needs to be something that's compatible with the high-quality image of our town. So, and there might be some other parameters, but that's, that's the way I'm leaning on that one.
Could I interject one thing?
Yeah.
The, the bicycle in front of Bistro Giante has been brought up a couple of times, and it's, it's interesting, because it's, it's decor, it's part of the, you could consider part of their landscape design, and maybe it denotes a French theme, I don't know. It's got a little flower basket on it.
It's a bicycle.
But they don't sell bicycles. And they're selling, it's a restaurant. And it really has nothing to do, other than part of their decor, to create some interest. And I think that's kind of the, the real problem here, is how do you allow people the freedom to create interest in their landscape, and, and then, but not allow them to put their merchandise out on the sidewalk as well, if that's what the direction is?
Well, I'm just using that as an example. I doubt if they're going to want to put a big giant plastic bowl of tomato soup out there or something. They probably already have something. So it allows everybody to, to have something if they want, but it kind of limits things, so we have some control over it. So that was my thought. I mean, it's not certainly a hundred percent refined, but generally, to allow something, to put limitations on how many pieces can make up a display, how big it can be, where it can be, and it, you know, should in general be movable. But, you know, that's something we can talk about, too. We'll see how the rest of the council thinks in general.
I guess I'm just, in, as a, put in, in the role of regulating these, or trying to, if you start counting objects, and then what is, when do we reach our limit to where you, you can't have any more landscape objects, because you- Because you-
Well, maybe the bicycle is a landscape object.
Well, let's not obsess about the Gianni bicycle, if we can.
We just don't want, I'm just not saying I want a clothes rack with 50 t-shirts on it.
Right, right.
That's more than two items.
Okay. Councilor Hall?
I'm going to do my best with this one. I got to tell you, this is the one I'm struggling with. I'm glad we came to it last, because I'm stuck. I mean, I do, gosh, I mean, if you've ever walked down the streets in Venice and you see the t-shirt shops, you definitely know what they're selling there. But that isn't necessarily the image that we're trying to portray in this community. That said, I don't know that mannequins sitting out front of wine stores drinking wine, holding cigars, is either. That said, I am, my opinion, and I stress that it is that, because I, this is one I struggle with, I am less inclined to allow statuary of that nature as an advertising component. Going back to the bicycle one last time, I don't see it having any relative meaning to Bistro Gianni, other than it is landscape architecture with flowers in it. It beautifies that area, it beautifies the town, arguably, to some and maybe to others. But what I don't feel that the residents of this community want, myself and all of us at this table, and many of us in this room, want to see is that merchandise being placed out on front porches, and having people stop and pick through it, to say, oh, this is what I'm interested in. Trying to limit the number or the amount of what we put out there doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me, because then you're really, in some ways, from an enforcement standpoint, going to put the onus back on the town to go and manage that. And I don't, I don't think that's right either. I read all of the comments from ZDRB, I think they're all well-thought-out. I have a very difficult time allowing, or saying that it makes reasonable sense to have merchandise or otherwise outside. It is different than a sign, or a menu sign, from that standpoint. My opinion is, and I probably would just default and say, I don't have a good, solid basis for which to stand on, so if we can't define it, we don't want to regulate it, then the easiest way to not do that is to say you can't do it, and then it's regulated. No one has to go out and count items, or make sure it's a certain size or width, or on a porch, or close to the business, three feet or not, just exclude it and we're done. That is different, I believe, from something as simple as, sorry Philippe, a bike in front of your restaurant, which has nothing to do with the nature of the restaurant. They're pretty flowers. But it doesn't have anything to do with advertising the business. And that's, I don't know if that helps, but that's all I can come up with.
Thank you. Councilor Dorenbecker?
I sometimes really like to see art pieces, or, and I sort of think of the bicycle in front of Philippe's. I see so many people taking photographs of Philippe's, because it's so attractive, it's so pretty. And nobody minds that bicycle. So I have a hard time, you know, really legislating, over-legislating everything. I mean, if something is beautifying the business, and beautifying the town, I don't know how we go about handling that. I don't want to say I don't want to see any beautiful pieces of art, or lovely displays on the streets. I think it makes for a vibrant, attractive neighborhood if you can accomplish that. So I really am torn. I don't know how to judge this. But, and I think that it's also not realistic to say that someone could have two pieces, and they have to bring them in every night. I mean, I don't see how that wouldn't work, as far as I could see if it were a piece of art, or even if it were not totally indicative of what that business is. If it's, you know, if it's part of, it's an artistic element, part of the design of the garden, or whatever, outside, I just, you know, how do you, when do you stop? Are you going to come to my house now and tell me, well, you know, tear out those rosebushes in front of your garden? You know, I don't know. I think we're getting, I'm ready for these sign ordinances to be done. But anyway, you know, if we can only accomplish not having plastic fruit and vegetables in front of places by saying, you know, no one can have advertising statuary, then I guess I'd have to go with that. But I think in some ways, we're limiting the opportunity to have some, you know, enrichment also.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Bob, has anybody called you to complain about the bicycle? I mean, actually?
Oh, no.
Okay, good. I was afraid you were actually saying they had. Okay, I won't mention the bicycle. To me, there's only one of two options, because we can, if you talk about the legislation, and will it work, and all that kind of stuff, it's either yes or no. I mean, yes, you can do it, or no, you simply can't. What I don't want to do is overreact to the person who put the mannequins out, who had absolutely no concept of taste whatsoever, and kind of killed the rest of businesses because of that. What I would prefer to say is essentially what Marita said, which is, I think, yeah, that's fine. Is there any way to write it, though, that you can say, but not mannequins? I mean, I-
If I may, I think-
But I just, I think that we're, I don't want to go into overregulation. I definitely don't want to add problems with enforcement to figure that out. I think 98% of the businesses in town would do things very well. Maybe to my detriment, my wife bought a jacket, because she saw it walking by at Overland. It's a very nice jacket. And, you know, they're not doing a flea market out front, so that's fine. So I don't know where, this is like pornography, you know, when you see it, and I don't know how you define it. But I would prefer to err on the side of let people be creative and be tasteful, and if they're not tasteful, I don't know what to do about that. But we know that we should write mannequins as an exemption, that you can't do that.
Or plastic fruit.
If I may, I think I have a solution in the spirit that might be appropriate. What I'm hearing is, you want creative applications, you want tasteful. So here, what I think you need to say is, it may be permitted with an approved application, and then you require them to go through a process, they have to present whatever they're going to do, define it, it goes to the ZDRB, and then it's the ARNA. And then you're not, right now, we try it, because there, what you're saying is, if, in other words, it's your responsibility to bring us a quality application, and we're not going to try to figure out size and everything, because we don't know. And that's the one thing, when we've tried that, the first thing that comes through never fits what we do. So I think if your spirit is, it may be, you know, what I would say, it's not allowed unless it's been approved, and you have a formal approval process, and then we hold people to a standard, and then they've got to do, you know, staff can review it, look at it, comment, look at appropriate conditions, and rather than try to prejudge everything, you know, and then we might, you know, see where the first couple of applications get us, and go from there, and see if that gives us any guidance. I'm hearing, kind of, I'm thinking that might be an approach to get you where you want to go.
And I would agree with that.
Oh, yes.
I would agree with that, and just to add my comments-
Yes, I think we should.
Just to add my comments about it, I have a problem with merchandise being displayed in the front of businesses, because it's not that Overland doesn't look good, it's not that Page Sellers didn't look good, it's that we have to regulate, not for those that do a really nice, creative, attractive job, but we have to be able to regulate and explain why somebody else can't do a really bad, ugly job. And so that's where, that's why we're all struggling with this. If we could count on the public always having good taste, okay, whose taste are we using as a definition of good taste? Because clearly, the people that have done things that we thought were bad taste, they didn't do it on purpose, purposely bad taste, it was just their taste. So, I mean, we're picking on the mannequins, but I have a hard time believing somebody had that idea, thinking, let's drive business away from our storefront. You know what I mean? I mean, I'm making fun of that maybe a little bit, but that's the challenge, is what Richard thinks is really cool and classy-looking, I might think that's inappropriate, and when you, I just worry about saying you can put anything that you sell in your store out there, because it will turn into a t-shirt rack, and then, you know, we've seen stanchions and ropes leading up to, you know, certain product in one store, that also had a, an easel with product on it, and, you know, and so, people get creative, but that doesn't always mean that it's something that we want to see on our street front. So I do like the town manager's idea, though, about needing pre-approval, so that there is some kind of process to prohibit.
If I may, Chairman Mr. Mayor, I was going to suggest maybe mannequins on bicycles, but that-
With wine barrels?
With wine barrels, yes. Well, you know, and what I would ask also is the opportunity to go back and do some further research on this specific issue, because there are two points that are probably going to pop up as the process occurs. One is to have criteria that is defined, that is understandable, by someone who comes in to make an application, so that if they get their application approved, or deny, that the criteria isn't being applied arbitrary. And so, that, I believe that certainly we can have an approval process in place. I think what we'll have to work towards is making sure that the criteria of what is tasteful, I mean, that's probably not a word that we'd even use in that, in the definition, but what is considered to be appropriate is sufficiently defined, so that it can be applied for person A versus person Z. And, but we will, quite candidly, in all my years of working with sign ordinances, I have not had to research the advertising statuary issue before, but I'm sure there's some kind of guidance out there.
So we've given you, hopefully, a majority of the feedback that you needed.
Well, I am curious if there's any thinking on the wine motif in general, wine barrels, wine bottles. Is that in the realm of displaying merchandise, or is that, can those be objects that? See, my belief is, all of this is about creating interest, catching someone's eye, whether it's beautiful, or whimsical, or otherwise, that it creates appeal, that someone's, what's going on there, and you go look at it. And here, I think it's, you know, whether it's good, bad, beautiful, or not. The wine thing, though, is a recurring thing here, and it doesn't seem to want to go away. And that's one that I know is going to keep coming at us. So I'm specifically interested in any thinking you might have on that.
Vice Mayor?
I use wine barrels for trash cans at the deli, right? So I wouldn't tell a wine tasting room that you can't use trash cans for flowers, because you sell wine, but the deli who doesn't sell wine can use it for their trash. So I think that, to me, that's the difference of merchandise, putting out bottles of wine that they sell, or empty bottles that they've drunk in there, and having wine-looking, you know, somebody has a nice, big, old-style crusher out there as art, you know, do we want to say no to that? Probably not. So I think, to me, the focus is merchandise, things that they are selling, is how I would look at that.
Other comments from council on that specific? Councilor Dorenbecker?
Well, I can agree with that. Rather than having people stack up, stack, or, you know, line up wine bottles in front of their business on the street, that would not work. But in the case of the store with all the clothing that's been there forever, I don't think we can do anything about that, that's going to stay. But this is just future reference, right?
We've already enforced that.
They've already told them to take it away.
Oh, really?
It was technically non-compliant all this time.
Oh, I didn't know that. Well, never mind, no. As far as, you know, wine-related objects, though, if it's, you know, sort of, we, you know, we're in the heart of the wine country, I wouldn't be surprised to see it. And as long as it's not bottles lined up, I could, you know, could accept it.
Other comments? Is there a consensus that if it's non-merchandise-specific, that it's themed, that that's acceptable? I don't know if that's going to be the answer to the questions, though, because your inquiries have been related to putting bottles out in front.
I kind of go back to Overland. I mean, it is one store that generates a lot of income for this town. It's always open, there are always staff, people are always going in there. Not to let them have their one stand and one jacket out there, I think is unreasonable myself, because you really can't tell, the way their building is set up, what they're in there.
Well, they do have display windows, like everybody else does, so you can see the product. You can see the product, just not as obvious, for sure.
You know, it draws a lot of people in, I know, people that work there, it's very positive. That's why I was trying to be as accommodating as possible, but yet kind of coming up with some criteria. I'm willing to talk about those, but, you know, two items, and, you know, in general, seem to fit almost everybody. You could put a big, giant wine bottle and a barrel, you could get, you know, the coat out there. So I'm kind of open, because I, if we, I think we first need to have a consensus, are we yes or no on the outdoor display? And then maybe we can, if we have a consensus, we're willing to do it.
Well, we've already talked about that. We've already identified outdoor displays by-
Permit.
Permit and staff approval, or ZDRB approval. That, we've talked about, and already said, we believe that's going to be acceptable.
I do think we mean-
This is wine tasting room-specific, and I think it comes down to wine bottles out front or not. You know, it's not just like at Page Sellers, it's on the railing of the porch. Is that a public safety hazard? Whereas at Maison Rie, it's in a sidecar, you know? Is that acceptable, and then it's not acceptable at Page? That's when you start to get into real nuances. And are you penalizing the tasting rooms then, because they have plastic, or glass merchandise they're trying to use as a display?
I'm fine with it, I don't think-
With the council's concurrence, staff here is interested in trying to facilitate something, so recognizing, you may modify it, we're going to go out on a limb, and Bob, I, and Arnold are going to suggest that we can probably work on trying to come up with some range of criteria to allow this to launch, because we do hear consensus from the council, that consideration of something under a permit basis-
Not strict prohibition interest, so.
But we, and staff will see if we can work on some reasonable framework to put in, because otherwise, most of the stuff, I think, we're well-shaped, and we would be looking forward to bringing this to an end for you, and having the ordinance ready for first reading in the meeting in September.
And in the interest of time tonight, since we're running quite late, I'm going to ask that we move on from the workshop discussion.
We think we've got what you, you've given us good feedback.
I have one very minor thing. In the definition for animated sign, I'd add the word "human" in there, because the last thing we want is one of those humans moving one of those signs around.
Well, I believe we already talked about that, too, we might as well, if we need to add that in, because we talked about that when we had the previous discussion about signs, sign spinners, yeah.
Humans or mannequins cannot spin signs.
Or animals can.
Or animals.
Okay, let's move on, since we're running out of time, to 10E, Town Hall Structural Strengthing Ad-Hoc Subcommittee.
Very quickly, Mayor and council, when we talked about this project, there's two elements that we talked about having input from the council. One would be a short-term ad-hoc committee to evaluate presentations from potential financial advisor or alternative. I anticipate that project being only a couple of months, because we'll get some proposals and concepts, invite two or three firms to present to you, they'll make a, you know, that steering ad-hoc committee will make a recommendation, we'll bring it back to the council. The second ad-hoc committee would be what I'm going to call the project committee, and they would be responsible for providing input and direction on the RFP document, and then helping to resolve and coordinate and be involved with the issues related to the actual construction of the project.
So is there a nomination to be had for one of the two positions for the Finance Ad-Hoc Subcommittee?
Well, I will volunteer-
Well, I will volunteer for the financing committee and I will nominate Councilmember Hall for the financing committee.
We're going to need nominations for each if Councilmember Hall would like to return the favor.
Isn't this to determine whether or not we're actually going to create these ad hoc committees?
Pardon?
Are we actually creating them on the spot?
We're creating them.
Yeah, you've got to.
Congratulations.
Well, there hasn't been a second to your nomination.
Oh, I second.
Does Councilmember Hall willing to be one of the?
Yeah, I'm happy to be on the finance committee if you think I can.
Would you like to recommend Vice Mayor?
Nominate someone?
Or nominate the Vice Mayor?
Sure, I would nominate the Vice Mayor.
Or is it if someone else is specifically interested?
Since he's expressed an interest.
Yeah, I, I would, I definitely don't want to do the other one, but I'd definitely do financing. I don't want, I don't really know anything about building and construction, so.
It's fun.
Neither do I.
So if you, I mean, if somebody would like to nominate Councilmember Mueller as opposed to Vice Mayor?
I would like to nominate Councilmember Mueller to be on the finance oversight committee.
To be, to be fair though, I, I should allow you've nominated the Vice Mayor. If there's not a second to the nomination, then we can, we can accept another nomination. So, is there a second to the nomination of Vice Mayor? No second?
I nominated him, so can I second him?
No. So, in that case, the nomination for Councilmember Mueller to be on that has been presented. Is there a second for Councilmember Mueller to be the other?
Second.
Okay.
Who's the first?
Councilmember Hall.
Okay.
Are all in favor of those nominations?
Aye.
I know that was a little bit sloppy, but.
Yes.
Basically, we were agreeing to Councilmembers Mueller and Hall for the finance subcommittee. And then is there a nomination for the project subcommittee?
Who wants to do it?
Is there anybody who's interested in being nominated?
I would like to nominate Councilmember Dornbecker for the RFP.
Second.
Committee.
RFP? Oh, okay.
That's what Steve called it.
Okay.
Construction.
So that nomination has been seconded also?
Anyone else?
Is there another Vice Mayor?
Anybody else? You really want finance? You really want finance, I'll switch.
I would rather do that.
All right.
What's happening?
I, we have to make a decision.
So you just finished that motion. There was a motion to nominate Councilmember Dornbecker with.
So I'm going to, I'm going to make a substitute proposal that, I don't know if I can do this all by myself or not, but I'm going to nominate Councilmember Mueller and Councilmember, wait a minute, Councilmember Hall and Vice Mayor Chilton for the finance subcommittee and Councilmembers Mueller and Dornbecker for the RFP.
I'll second it.
Committee. Can we do that all in that type of motion? So that's been moved and seconded. Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we've got.
Congratulations, John.
Congratulations, John.
It's too late, we voted. So do we have that straight staff that needs to know this?
Marjorie, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have Councilmember Mueller and Dornbecker on the.
Project committee.
Project and Vice Mayor and Hall on the finance.
Financing.
You'll oversee the whole?
I'll oversee everything. Okay, moving on. 10F, recycled water project, consideration for, or the adoption of mitigated negative declaration.
Good evening again, Mayor Dunbar and council. We have two documents here tonight, a draft mitigated negative declaration and a final mitigated negative declaration. I'll try to condense these into 25 slides.
That's a joke, right?
I like to know.
Serious. This is a $90,000 effort that we've gone through on our recycled water project. I do want to introduce Carrie Lukasik, who is from GHD.
Who's patiently sat through this entire evening.
And she's, wrote the staff report, she wrote most of these documents, she worked with our sub consultants doing the studies, she worked with the agencies, so she's been very involved in this, this project and this document. And first thing I want to do is talk about what is a mitigated negative declaration. Because really, most of our projects are categorically exempt, which means it's really no impact to environment, it's maintenance, the state has said this is exempt from going through the SEQA study process. The other end of the spectrum is an environmental impact report, which says you need to kill many trees to save the environment by doing many studies. So we're in between, we're doing mitigated negative declaration, we've done the studies, we've said there's no significant impact of this project on the environment, that we've mitigated all the potential impacts of these projects. So what I want to do is go through this project and give you some background on the recycled water project, talk about the initial study, which is what you do before you write the mitigated negative declaration. There is an alternatives analysis required, there's the mitigation measures that we're proposing. There were several letters written by state agencies as this document was sent to what's called the State Clearing House and that lets all state agencies know that this document is available for review. And actually, the federal government through US Bureau of Reclamation went through a similar process at the national level for the National Environmental Policy Act. And then we have a mitigation monitoring program, which we're going to use during the design and construction to make sure that all these mitigation measures we're proposing will be implemented with the construction of the project. So as some background, the town and the Veterans Home have been recycling water since 1977, which was a permit requirement from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. Now, this does reduce discharges to the Napa River and also offsets use of groundwater and river water for irrigation of the vineyards and the golf course. Since 1977, land uses have changed. The hayfield is now a golf course, the Veterans Home, the golf course is now vineyards and we've brought on new, about customers doubling our storage capacity. In 2003, the town recycled water users, our customers, entered into new agreements. 2010, the town and the Veterans Home was required to expand the recycled water system by the new National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. With that, we hired and entered an agreement with GHD, which is formerly Windsor and Kelly, and this is their scope of services, prepare the master plan, the feasibility studies, have the stakeholder meetings, apply for the US Bureau of Reclamation and State Water Resources Control Board grants and financing. Item for tonight is the NEPA and SEQA environmental studies and documents, and that will lead into the design of the plan, specification, estimate, utility coordination before we get to construction. So this is our, town limits is in yellow, so here's this west side, Highway 29 running north-south, Napa River in blue running north-south, Silverado Trail running north-south. The green is the vineyards that are using irrigated recycled water for irrigation. So you have the golf course, the recycled water line runs across the valley, under the river, over Silverado Trail. Chimney Rock was the original customer, and then over the years, we've added Clotevall, Stags Leap and Mendavi. This is the primary and secondary treatment at the wastewater treatment plant. It's a primary trickling filter and a digester system. This is the tertiary treatment, Title 22, which is the cloying contact chamber, which is the concrete. And then this is the fuzzy filter. Yountville was one of the first agencies in California to have a fuzzy filter to treat the wastewater, to make it recycled water and that it could be used for irrigation. This is the effluent pond, so once the water's treated, it goes into this pond, it's in, it's held until it's either released to the Napa River or pumped over to the recycled water customers. It's just one of the numerous ponds over at, this is Mendavi, but the other ponds on the east side of the Napa River. What this project wanted to do is add new customers on the west side of the Napa River and pump recycled water into their storage ponds. So this is the study area, so this is the existing users are here in blue. We're talking about adding new customers here to the west Napa River, so between the town and the Napa River. This includes Berenger, Silverado and Herrick. And then the larger area was the phase three area, which we decided not to pursue because it was $11 million project. So the purpose of the initial study mitigated negative declaration is to examine the potential impacts to the environment. It's a joint document with the US Bureau of Reclamation of the National Environmental Policy Act. This has mitigation measures that both agencies have agreed to. And then there's a mitigation monitoring reporting plan, which is at the back of this final document, final mitigated negative. So there are many areas that had to be studied under the California Environmental Quality Act. That includes agricultural resources, air quality, biological resources, which is such as fish and game, fish and wildlife, cultural resources, archaeological, historic buildings, geology and soils, greenhouse gas emissions, hazardous materials, hazards, hydrology, water quality, sedimentation, erosion control, land use planning, mineral resources, noise, population and housing, you know, we have to study it even though it may not apply. Public services, recreation, transportation and traffic, utility services, and then we also look at the cumulative impacts. So putting all these areas together, does it have a cumulative impact on the environment? With SEQA, we have to look at alternatives and we've talked to you about these as part of the rate study. There's always a no project alternative, so if you don't do the project, what's the impact? The additional recycled water storage at the joint treatment plant, we looked at a $5 million, $5 million gallon tank, which was not cost effective. We looked at distribution of town parks, which building pipelines through the towns' streets to the parks was cost prohibitive. Alternative pipeline alignments, we did proceed with this because we found some cultural resources that we wanted to avoid. And then there's the land application alternatives, where taking vineyard out of production and putting in hayfields to see, was that effective, which was not cost effective. But because they were studied, that was put into the environmental document. So the summary is that there is a finding of no significant impact. Now, if there was a significant impact, we'd be doing an environmental impact report. The affected, for each of those areas, we looked at the affected environment, the regulatory setting, because there's numerous state agencies and federal agencies that look at these different areas, whether it's US Environmental Protection Agency, the Air Quality Management District or Regional Water Quality Control Board. And then we looked at the environmental consequences of each of those areas. Proposed mitigation measures and monitoring and reporting plan was prepared, and this was set out for comments. Oops, going too fast. The State Clearing House, which is where this document is sent, essentially sent us a letter saying it's been distributed to the 17 or so state agencies that asked to see mitigated negative declarations. State Water Resources Control Board sent a long letter, which we prepared a response. California Department of Transportation was mostly looking at architectural, archaeological information. And then this, our Regional Water Quality Control Board also had comments. Most of these we anticipated and we didn't see it as a, as a big problem, but the responses are in the document. The mitigation monitoring program has a list of mitigation measures, which we're going to put into the specifications and then require the contractor to comply. That includes air quality measures, keep down the dust, things like that, traffic control plans, so they have lane closures and proper signage and detours if necessary, minimize the loss of trees with the arborists, avoid impact of red-legged frogs if we find any in the ponds, which means usually just avoiding the construction. Looking at nesting bird surveys, avoid and restore any wetlands, such as Hopper Creek when we cross the creek. Avoid cultural resources, prepare a cultural resources monitoring plan and archaeological inventory, implement the cultural resources data recovery plan, and the treatment of archaeological resources is offered during construction. And we are in negotiations with the US Bureau of Reclamation right now, and then this will go to the State Historic Preservation Officer for approval. Protection of paleontological materials, I'll have to get you to help me with that one. Procedures for encountering human remains, you call up the coroner, we have to have them come out and look at it. Now, we're not saying we're going to find any, but if, we have to plan for, in case we do. Conduct a geotechnical study, we are doing that. This mostly is related to liquefaction, which isn't a problem in this area, but we are looking at the soils in the, in the area for construction and backfilling. Preparing a stormwater pollution prevention plan to reduce erosion and pollutant runoff during construction. Options for construction de-watering if necessary, frac-out contingency plan, this is, if we're directional drilling under Chase Creek or Hemmen Creek, they have a bentonite slurry that they use to push the pipe underneath. Well, if that seeps up into the creek, then we have to stop and, and go through the plan and not have an impact on the creeks. Noise reduction measures, obviously we all want that. So the recommendations tonight are to direct questions to staff, invite public comments, interview and discuss the mitigated negative declaration. With the resolution, we're asking you to adopt the mitigated negative declaration, adopt the mitigation monitoring program and to approve the recycled water project. With that, I can answer any questions.
And I do want to footnote, this is significantly different than what you normally do, so we wanted to make sure that you were aware of it and also that you're aware of the consequences because this plan has a direct impact in the cost and the construction as we go forward on the project.
Any questions about the staff report? Specifically? No? No questions? I'd invite the public to comment if you have anything to add, or did he capture everything that he feel is necessary in the staff report and in your reports?
Yeah, Graham caught everything that's relevant in terms of environmental impacts and, and the process.
Okay.
It's not a friendly process.
No.
No.
How many, 17 agencies was it?
Plus the other three.
Yeah, too many. Okay, then back to council for discussion and potential action. Is there any further discussion on this or action?
There's some regulatory musts, so I don't see that much to talk about.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 3051-12, adopting a mitigated negative declaration, adopting a mitigation monitoring program and approving the town of Yountville State mandated recycled water expansion project, WW0002.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And just because we did that quickly does not mean we take this lightly. Just because you did an incredibly thorough job to get us to this point. So thank you and.
Thank you.
Now the red tape. Yeah, really.
Begins anew.
Continues, I suspect, yeah.
Yes, continues.
All right, thank you very much.
Informational items, since we want to move quickly to wrap you up.
Yeah, notice the one, the one we can just reference, the other one, do we have a Yountville days logo?
You do, it's going to be presented. I just wanted to footnote, the almost ugliest process is the arena and there's a staff report outlining the current number allocation is a good outcome.
Well, and.
And here's the new logo.
Isn't this exciting? Woo-hoo! And the night on a high note. So we decided it was time for an upgrade. Uh-oh, Margie.
What?
For an update. We did go out for a process where competitively professional graphic artists submitted back for review and this is what was chosen, so, yes.
Hasn't the chili cook-off been canceled?
No, the town will be doing the chili.
The town is doing it, not the chamber?
No. Yeah, the town has taken that on. So, I just wanted to introduce that to you. Hopefully we'll see that it does come in black and white for those offended by the colors.
I can't even read the letters at the top.
It says movie in the park chili cook-off parade and festival, so we wanted to capture all of that. Yes, I'm really excited about it, I can tell you are too.
So, so this, the plan is to include this on.
This will be on all of our new, all of our new marketing materials.
Flyers.
Yeah.
Website.
The old logo was a little bit dated. This is a pretty big event for the community here, especially for the locals, and we want to make sure that we're treating it as such.
Oh, that's a wine bottle.
And if you notice, the mountains in the back, it captured the town's logo. They also included the drum major that was in the old logo, so it's very, there's a lot of depth into the logo.
The old logo was just the drum major drumming through with no real identification to our locale.
Is that our new town color, Yountville yellow?
Yes, exactly.
We haven't finalized the official color. Well, thank you very much.
And also just on that note, the grand marshal of this year's parade was chosen at Sharon Stenss with the Yountville sun and the parade theme this year will be Yountville a day in the sun. So, very exciting.
Very good, good choice. She's been a great community advocate and, and voice of the news, so, good choice. Thank you to the committee and all the trouble, again, all the hours that went in to get to this and we just get to say, that looks great.
I.
How simple is that? What's that?
I appreciate that looks great.
Yes, it does. I like it.
Very good. Yeah, instead of having to wonder exactly what the drum was all about. All right, very good. Moving on to meeting reports, are there any specific meeting reports that we need to hear from?
I have one.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, it was a joint meeting between the Watershed Information Conservation Committee and the Napa County Groundwater Resources Advisory Committee. It was their first combined meeting and essentially they're talking about outreach to the community and to people who have wells because the groundwater resources committee wants to be able to test more wells, especially up in the Dry Creek area. So they gave us a draft of their new newsletter. It's just a draft, or else I would have gotten enough for each of you. When I do get them, I will distribute them. But it was a very informative meeting and, so, that's about it.
Very good. Flood control was canceled today for a lack of quorum. I will just skip down to leave California City's North Bay Division meeting. It was held in Novato a couple of weeks ago now, and we discussed, this issue came up earlier. held in Novato a couple of weeks ago now, and we discussed, this issue came up earlier, which was our RENA, Regional Housing Needs Allocation. There was a panel discussion and a very timely discussion throughout the entire membership about the sub-RENA that is happening in Napa County. I was surprised to learn that it was a little more unique than I would have expected in some of the other counties, but it's, I think it's gonna be a really important aspect for us moving forward with our housing numbers. Any other meeting reports specifically?
I'll be very close.
Vice Mayor?
LAFCO met yesterday. We had two relatively small annexation requests, and one of the unique things about one of them that actually was approved, was we did not have the consent of the landowner, we also did not have the objection of the landowner, we had no response from the landowner, which is Pacific Indian Railroad. So, that one did go through, kind of down near the new flyover near Green Island Road. And there was another one that was continued for two months because of extremely complex lines of CSA number three and RULs and overlapping spheres of influence, it was bizarre. So, the next meeting for us is October 1st, and there'll be one more meeting through the year. That's LAFCO.
Very good. Any announcements?
I've got one.
Councilmember Hall?
Yes, just a quick note that next Wednesday's first day of school again, so please be aware when you're driving on Yount Street that there will be kids and parents floating around, as well as the rest of Yountville, many people walk to school. I want to announce that Yountville School Foundation was the winner by the vote...
A landslide.
A landslide, if you will, by the vote of many people for a website that's being provided by Tunnel, Tummel.me?
Tummel.me.
Tummel.me, so thank you to Councilmember Chilton and all of you out there that voted for the Yountville School Foundation as being the recipient. Two other, three other items, the Warm Burner Golf Tournament is on September 13th, it's being hosted by Kiwanis here at the Yountville Ventnor's Golf Course, so please get involved. The other golf tournament that everyone should be aware of is the Pathway Home Golf Tournament, which is down at Eagle Vines, and that's on September 17th. So, the first one's on September 13th, that's the Warm Burner, and then, September 17th is the Pathway Home, and I know Mayor Dunbar's got two groups for Pathway Home, and I now have one, so if you're looking to play golf, certainly reach out to me at least, and maybe he's got space, too. The last item I want to mention is that, it was front-page news the other day, I know Steve Rogers and I will dearly miss the local barber, and that's why I look this way tonight, and so, I would just say, because he is an avid golfer, thanks to Larry Reyes, I will miss having him as a neighbor on my street, and also to make me look better than I normally do, but I'll have to find someone to replace him.
You shaved your head in memory?
Yeah, I will be, very soon.
And we are working on trying to put together an official proclamation on his behalf for all of the service he has given those who have long hair and those who have very little through the years. I'm going to just make three very quick announcements. The Napa Expo and Fair officially starts tomorrow, there was actually a gala this evening, but now, it's over. But, so, a lot of fun events all throughout Wednesday through Sunday, really something for everybody and every family, so it's really family-friendly, so please consider going down to the Expo and Fair. Also, a couple of exciting things, this has already been on display, but we're having a formal reception for our local artist, Mars Lazar, who has some really incredible Yountville-specific and Napa Valley and general photography. There will be, so his gallery show continues until September 17th. There is an artist reception that's also combined with the Yountville Chamber Mixer on Thursday, August 16th, at the Community Center, so an opportunity to see some of his amazing photography and to purchase some of your very own. Also, at the Napa Valley Museum is Memory Bank 2, which is also, there'll be, also be an opening reception this Saturday, August 11th at 5:30. One of the interesting elements of this, this is really about, as they describe it, an exhibition of place and people, and my understanding is our own longtime local residents, Barbara and Bud Delinsky, are part of this presentation. It's really quite an amazing group of people that have been around our community for, and the Valley for many, many years, so, two great art shows to, to not miss. Any other announcements? Yes, Vice Mayor?
I have two. Since we don't have a meeting again until, I think, September 18th, is that what we said?
Correct.
Sunday, September 2nd, Labor Day Weekend, is the annual Focus Labor Day Weekend BBQ. Again, Sunday, it'll be from noon to 5:00 at the North Yountville Park, Yountville Community Park, as it has been the last couple of years, but just want to point that out. Also, sort of a save the date, Friday, October 19th, there will be a fundraiser for the Yountville School Foundation. Soon, you can read it on our website, but don't go there right now. We're having a Texas Hold'em Tournament. This is real Texas Hold'em, as in, you can actually win things, so, it's not just for fun, I want to point out that it's for anybody, you don't have to be, don't have to know what Texas Hold'em is, we're gonna have a...
It's a game.
I would appreciate that, because it enhances my chances of winning. No, in all seriousness, an hour before the play starts is we're gonna have a poker clinic, so just for people to be able to sit down and play through some hands and learn Texas Hold'em. It is very easy, it'll be a lot of fun, and will raise money to keep Yountville Elementary School open. And if you've read the newspapers lately, there's a very good Napa Register article about the fact that there, if, if the taxes in November don't pass, which they won't, that the district is looking at closing another elementary school, and I can tell you the reason, the primary reason that Yountville is not being considered is because of the contract that the community has with the, with the school district. So, let's continue to raise money to, to keep that contract and honor that. So, that will be October 19th, Friday, you'll see more about it. Thank you.
And also, since Samantha, we still have you here, pool is open until?
The last date for public swim is next Tuesday, and then, school starts Wednesday. It will remain open Tuesday through Friday and Sundays for senior swim through Labor Day Weekend, and it will remain open to the public just on Saturday and Sunday through Labor Day Weekend.
Very good, so...
Using, they can go to our website, townofyountville.com/pool, and see our updated schedule.
So, on September 2nd, you recommend people go to the Focus BBQ and then head up to the pool to cool off?
That would be great.
Enjoy, good combination for that weekend.
Or vice versa, I think.
Or vice versa, yes. Two to five, or 12 to 14.
That's true, you don't want to swim on a full stomach, right?
We will have kegs, and they won't have that at the pool, so...
No, we don't.
Take the trough.
I don't know if that's healthy.
So...
I think that's gonna get us through, the list of future agenda items are there, do
we have need for closed session?[1757.83]